I think we're going to get started again if everybody could have a seat.
Good evening again. This is a study session for the Sherwin-Williams Urban Village Project. I think we are all familiar with the site, but just in case we are not, to orient you, this is the railroad going north-south. This is Horton. Sherwin is right here and Park Avenue is right here. So this is about an 8.5 acre site and was a former Sherwin-Williams paint factory which operated in the city since the early 1900s and it ceased operations in the mid-2006. Actually Charlie and I were fortunate enough to see the factory in operation. Probably we saw the last paint cans of paints come out of the system. So that was kind of exciting. And we did that site survey because at that time we had an application for the site, a development application, and the cast of characters were roughly the same as they are today. At that time, the proposal didn't go beyond the study session and then the application was withdrawn. So since then, the remediation on the site has been completed. It got completed in January of this year. There's a deed restriction regarding soil extraction, groundwater extraction, and some other site activities that may interfere with installed remedial features. I have asked the applicant to give more details of what these restrictions are. And also, there's a slurry wall that will come up from time to time and to show the location of that slurry wall. But as far as the type of land use is concerned, there are no restrictions regarding that. So this is the proposal. It's the site development plan. Horton Street is on the top and Sherwin on your right. So the site uses the South Park in San Francisco as an organizing function for the site. So you have a central green around which three new parcels are created. And this parcel A is actually the existing building that you see on the site today, which is a Taiwan building and will stay and will be used for office space. So the biggest parcel is parcel B, which is about 85,000 square feet in size. Parcel C here is a little smaller. It's about 56,000 square feet. And parcel D here is around about 25,500 square feet. You also have a public space between where the Central Greenway ends and the parcel D. Just to orient you, this is the city parcel, what we often call as the railroad parcel. And the Horton Landing Park is right here on another end of the site. In terms of the proposal, of course, the Horton Landing Park is not a part of this proposal, but the extension of the Greenway is part of the proposal, as well as development of the city parcel as a park is part of the proposal. In terms of uses, like I mentioned, the existing building will be, it's about 70,000 square feet, and will be reused as office space. Parcel B will have primarily a residential building, 220 units, and it will have ground floor retail of about 15,000 square feet. Parcel C, residential alone, 150 units. And parcel D as well, residential and its 90s. It's a total of 640 units. This is the vehicular circulation plan. As you can see, Sherwin is, Sherwin as well as Horton are the key ways that you are going to access the site. And then you can, I mean, you can see the rest of the circulation as it would occur. This is the illustrative development concept. So this building is the existing Taiwan building, also known as Building 113. It's about 45 feet tall. This is parcel B. As you can see, the heights are varying, but it will reach the maximum to 75 feet. The same is the case, the varying heights. Again, this is illustrative. This has not been designed. And the highest point would be 75 feet. The parcel D, the highest height as they have submitted at this point is 90 feet. And as you can see, there is some illustration of how the Central Green is going to work. And you have the Greenway here, and you have the park here. Here, at this point, they're proposing this to be used as a dog park. This open area is proposed to be used as a child's park, maybe also accommodate adult fitness. These are initial concepts, and obviously, this is a study session, and the whole idea is to get more comments from the public as well as the commission. In terms of conformity to the land use, so the site has two land use designations. The one in green, it's PO or Park slash Open, and the remainder is MUR, which is mixed use with residential. This road is included in the general plan. So, and that's where you see the Central Green is occurring in the roads on the side. As the site is over five acres, regulations require that the applicant apply for a planned unit development. As a part of that, if it's going to be a planned unit development, then it needs to be, it can be a mix of uses. However, residential has to be one of the uses, which it is. But it does require a mix of uses. The regulations do not specify an exact mix. This mix is determined by the commission and the council. What is being proposed right now is residential as the main use, and the mix that they are proposing is the 70,000 square feet of office in the existing building and the 15,000 square feet of retail commercial on parcel B. A thing to note is because a proportion of the site is PO, and that's about approximately two acres, they have to provide two acres of open space slash park. And so what that does, when you exclude that two acres, plus we exclude the road, the net developable area on site is about 5.3. So all the roads proposed, as well as open areas, will not be included in the developable land. In terms of residential density, what is allowed is 85 units per acre by right, which can be increased to 100 units, provided that they give, as a bonus height. And in order to obtain bonus, there are various categories of public benefits that they need to pick. What they are proposing is 86.8 units per acre, and that calculates to 12 bonus points. FAR, what is allowed by right is two, and the bonus FAR is three. What they are proposing is 2.7, and that translates into 70 bonus points. Okay. And it's not, all right. Height. So there are two height zones on the site. The southern portion along Sherwin Avenue is 55 feet by right and 75 as bonus. And the northern portion is 75 by right and 100 by right, 100 feet by bonus. Parcels B and C, as I mentioned, up to 75 feet is proposed, and on parcel D, up to 100 feet is proposed. So this translates into bonus points of 100. So as you know, as we went through the bonus point system in the MASS project, it is not necessary to separate, to obtain separate points for bonuses in each of the categories. For example, they need bonus points for the proposal for density, FAR, as well as height. These are not added together, but what is done is that we see in which category they need the most points. And in this case, it's height. And the number of bonus points that are needed for height is hundreds. So they need to provide 100 bonus points worth of public benefits. The project does reuse a Taiwan significant building, and that qualifies it for 35 bonus points. And that is, at this point, the only bonus points that we can identify. So additional 65 points will be needed. And in terms of, I'm not, don't know why this is getting stuck, but, so in terms of what are the potential sources of bonus points? The planning regulations have a whole laundry list of different categories, and I'm just going to mention a few. One is development of a public park, providing public parking, providing family-friendly housing, providing public improvements which are beyond what would naturally be, what would be required without requiring, without needing bonus points. So that is something additional to what would normally be required. So for example, it would, could be improvement of Hubbard Street between Park and Sherwin Avenues. It could also be assisting the city in acquiring and cleanup of a parcel which is part of Phase Two of the Horton Landing Park. So these would be some of the examples of public improvements which would qualify for bonus points. In terms of parks and Greenway section of a general plan, like I mentioned, because a portion of the site is zoned open and public, and that is approximately two acres, they have to provide that, two acres of open space. In addition to that, the general plan calls for the Greenway to traverse this parcel to connect within the Horton Landing Park to the north and the Park Avenue District, Park Avenue or the Bay Trail to the south. The project does provide two acres of open space in form of the Central Green and the plaza area that I'd shown. And they are including a preliminary design and construction of the park on the city-owned parcel next to the railroad, as well as the extension of the Greenway, as I'd shown earlier in the earlier slide. This is also under the Park Avenue District, the site. So the Park Avenue District Plan, some of the guidelines will apply. I'm not going to go through the entire different policies that are outlined in this plan, but I'll just highlight a few. One is, is to work with surrounding property owners and businesses for two-time share parking. One is to include residential or live-work units in large sites, encourage development of public park or parks with ample green space. Residential projects should include units that accommodate families, basically family-friendly housing, provide varied residential development for a mix of household types, sizes, as well as income levels, and provide active users on the street frontage of buildings, create a cultural arts center or a permanent home for emerital art exhibition. So these are some of the highlight, I'm just highlighting a few of the policies within the Park Avenue District Plan, some of which the project at this point, at this stage, does comply, and others, other things need to come as the project develops in terms of, you know, whether it's family-friendly housing or not, what kind of income levels there are, different uses of the buildings itself in terms of whether it can accommodate an arts center or not. So it's just a highlight of what the district plan includes. Some of the staff comments, one of the major comment was that the project should connect the city's Horton, the Central Green to the city's Horton, to the Horton Landing Park. So this could be done in multiple ways. This is just a rough and dirty sketch here. So it's basically transplanting parcel D here so that the open space that they were initially placing between parcel D and these two buildings would be at the northern end of the site, creating a bigger area with the Horton Landing Park. There was, there was a comment regarding the traffic volume numbers. We felt that certain preliminary traffic volume numbers would be useful in determining the usability of various open spaces. As, as you can tell, there are basically three open spaces that are in the mix here. One is the Central Green, one is the plaza within the site, and is the railroad parcel adjacent to the railroad. It was not clear what the intended goals of the park areas and the anticipated uses were. It was suggested that not all open areas necessarily needed to be green areas and could be used for other recreation, social issues. And some of the examples that were cited were from Barcelona and Mexico City. For example, this is Barcelona, and this is an aerial view of what is called La Rambla. And this is how, this is the central, what you saw as green area would look like this. There are trees, of course, the landscaping, but it is not necessarily a lawn. It is used, it's meant for different kinds of uses, like fairs, maybe farmers' markets. Another one is in Mexico City. Again, like I said, this goes about a kilometer, just less than, it's like three, four blocks. And this is how this one looks like. So you have the central median, well, not a median, but open area. It looks bleak at this point. I lived actually not too far away for a week. It hardly ever looked like this, except maybe late at night or early in the morning. Usually what, and I couldn't get a picture of that on Google, Google Maps. But this area was used by swap meets, used by a lot of artists displaying their, displaying their work. And, and further down in second block, you would also have fountains and, of course, benches and people to, you know, walk their dogs or to jog. So even though this looks kind of not being used, it was actually used for the whole week that I was there. It was never, it, like I said, only early in the morning when the vendors didn't come in, did it look like that. This is more closer home, Santana Row in San Jose. And this is how that area is, looks like. It's used again for different social and recreational uses. The applicant might mention that the whole idea of the Central Green probably originated with the South Park in the city. And this is probably in terms of the site, in terms of how big the site is, it's the closest of how Sherwin-Williams site is. And maybe that's the reason why the applicant used this as their inspiration. And that is more close to, you know, as an old green area where people are using for more as a park rather than for other social uses. So this is some of, just to show you the South Park. This was given to us yesterday by the applicant, and because there was a comment that we were not quite exactly sure what were the dimensions of the Central Green and the roads. So essentially, the middle area, the green, is 50 feet. And you have 20 feet of roadways on either side, and this is 17 feet from curb to the, to the wall. Other staff comments were that the circulation patterns, particularly for pedestrians and service-oriented deliveries, were not clear at this time. And we felt that this needed to be worked out sooner rather than later, because especially how the service-oriented deliveries occur, they usually are not thought of in the beginning of the project. And for a project of this size, this is a critical issue in terms of how pedestrians and other, the life on the city would look like. All roads, alleys, and open spaces would be public. The applicant would be responsible for its maintenance and perpetuity. The city would not owe these in fee, but there would be a public access and use easement agreement at the time of consideration of the project. In other words, all open spaces and all the roads and alleys that you see will function as any public street in the city. But its maintenance would be on the applicant. The applicant would also be responsible for design and construction of the park on the city parcel, and this could qualify for the bonus points. The project should also include the use of reclaimed water, as East Bay MUD's reclaimed water line runs right up to Horton Street. So the reclaimed water could easily be used for landscaping and non-portable uses. And to provide a mix of family-friendly and affordable housing. So these were some of the staff comments. The project was reviewed by the BPAC Committee as well earlier this month. And these were some of the main comments. The traffic diversion at Sherwin Avenue was needed to reduce the use of Horton Street. There was concern about delivery vehicles parking in the bicycle lane, concern about noise from the railroad tracks. They felt that the Emery-Garant should not be routed on Horton Street. Important to increase connectivity to the Mandela Parkway Bay Trail, provide residents and workers with transit passes, provide more bicycle parking than what is required by the planning regulations. There was also a community meeting a week ago. It was held on the 16th. About 45 people attended, including some of you. Commissioners Cardoza, Gunkel, and Keller were present. One of the suggestions was to swap the railway parcel with the Central Green and put the access to the garage towards the railroad, to visually connect the Central Green to the Horton Landing Park, that the buildings were too long for pedestrians, and that it needed east-west divisions. There was concern about traffic, particularly on Sherwin Avenue. And it was suggested that in terms of retail and commercial uses, co-ops like Arizmendi, which should be preferred, as they tend to be more neighborhood-oriented. And that the applicant used the leverage to push Emery-Garant to extend to the West Oakland Board. In terms of environmental review, the staff is in process of hiring a consultant to conduct the environmental analysis, to be in compliance with the California Environmental Equality Act, or CECL. In terms of permits that are required, it will require, as I mentioned, a planned unit development permit and also a general plan amendment. The reason that this would require a general plan amendment is that, like I showed you in my earlier slide, the site is divided into two land use designations. The northern side is PO or Park and Open, and to the southern portion, it is MUR. And since it's going to get, in terms of what, whatever finally, whatever the final site plan is, it will still not read in terms of the open space being on the north side and the residential or development on the south side. So in order to change that plan, you have to make a general plan amendment. The permits will be, and these permits will require approval from both the Planning Commission and the City Council. So the way it will occur is that it will come to the commission for your recommendation, and then that recommendation will be passed to the City Council for their consideration. In terms of the next steps, the project will be, is going to go in front of the Parks and Recreation Committee on November 20th, and then it's scheduled for a City Council study session on December 3rd. At some point during this time, or even after this time, it's really at the applicant's prerogative, the applicant will make a formal application, and then that would initiate further review, including environmental analysis. So our recommendation is for the commission to provide comment and direction on the following issues. Is the proposed mix of uses appropriate for the site? And by this, I mean, like I had mentioned, because this is a PUD, it needs to be a mix of uses, one of which is, has to be residential, that it already is. Then what is the remainder mix? That is not a regulated, that is something that is for the commission and the council to give direction. Is the proposed siting of parcels and buildings acceptable? Is the proposed circulation and layout, layout of the streets and the open areas appropriate? What type of open spaces does the commission wish on the site? Obviously, each of the open space and each of the building will require further review by the Planning Commission. But in terms, this is, would be, this would be an appropriate point to give direction to the applicant and staff in terms of what type of open spaces that you would wish to see on the site. And of course, finally, what categories of public benefits for the bonus points that this project requires would the commission prefer? And of course, if there are any other issues. So that concludes my presentation. Obviously, the applicant has a presentation of his own. If there are any questions of me, we'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Maru. Are there any questions with staff?
I have one quick one. On the park and open space in the general plan amendment, is what we're looking at equal to or greater than what is written in the general plan currently, in terms of acreage, square footage, whatever of open space?
Correct. It is. We will require a survey to make sure that it is, indeed is. Right now, the numbers are approximate, and, you know, I'm just taking the numbers that have been given to me and doing a rough calculations. But there will be, as the staff report mentions, a survey will be required to precisely plot how much of the open area that is, that is zoned open area on their site, how much is that. Right now, it's approximately two acres, by estimation.
And we'll make sure we keep at least two acres.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. So a survey would tell us whether that is equal or not, and there is no negotiation on that.
Maria, I have a question. Where, is there public parking within close proximity of this area?
The closest would be the City Hall parking lot behind.
And about how many spaces are there?
I want to say it's about, maybe under, under 45, roughly. Because the parking lot, there are some best, some parking spaces which are reserved for best-laid buildings. So the whole site is not public parking.
South Park in Soma is, the width of that is approximately, it's closer to 100 feet wide. Is that your recollection?
Yeah, yeah. It is certainly bigger than the 50 that they are proposing.
I think it's 70.
70, yeah.
I think it's about 70.
Okay.
I thought it was 100. Really?
Maybe. My recollection is 70. I could be wrong.
I'll just say, when I did a real, you know, real simple cursory measurement on Google Earth using the measurement tool, it appeared to me to be about 100. But, you know, that's not always the most accurate thing.
I had to design it for, for one of my landscape architecture classes long, long, long ago. So, anyway.
Sounds like you guys know what you're talking about. It's probably what it is.
I just have one more question, which is that regarding the streets, so they, they would be, the applicant would assume maintenance for them, they would have a public easement over them. Who would, would the applicant also assume liability on those streets in right of wise?
Michael.
Well, that would be part of the negotiation for the, for what that would eventually look like. So, you know, that's all, it's all subject to the, to the agreements which have yet to be negotiated between the city and the developer. But, and that'll be an important consideration.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Keller, the roads that are proposed, that would not be included in the open space calculation?
All right. So if there are no other questions, I think we can invite the applicant up to give us a presentation.
Be sure to lift your microphone.
Okay. So Commissioners, Chairperson Moss, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to present our plan. I want to, just on behalf of my partners, Will Thompson and Bruce Dorfman, our planner, Ivana Mitich. I am Joe Ernst with SRM Ernst Development Partners. And again, we're happy to be here and have the opportunity to present our plan, our vision, and get your feedback. We do think this is a very unique project, unlike others that have taken place before in Emeryville. We think this is a place where peoples, you know, those who will live here, those who will work here, and the public who will visit here, will, it'll be a space that they want to hang out. There we go. We do understand the importance of this project to the community, given out the length of time we've been involved with it, particularly the importance to the adjacent neighbors. You know, since we've been back involved with this at the beginning of this year, we've engaged in a series of formal and informal meetings with the community, getting feedback on a plan that we advanced 10 years ago. That plan evolved from many meetings with the community. We sat through a couple of years of Park Avenue committee meetings at the time. We did have a Planning Commission study session, and I believe we did have a City Council study session. And since that time, many elements of the plan, you know, have been incorporated into the general plan. Tonight, I wanted to give you just some overview of some of the things, you know, that we're looking at in terms of diversity. Ivana, our planner, will get into some more details about the individual spaces. And then Bruce, my partner, will take some time to provide some detail around what we've heard from the community and how we are reacting to it, how we are evaluating it. So for those of you, I'm sure most of you are very familiar with the site, but for those of you, I'll just provide a quick history. You know, Sherwin acquired one half of this site, the eastern half, in the late 19-teens, and started their paint operations there. In the 1950s, they acquired the west one half from the railroad. And during that time, you know, they had their paint operations, and also in the '30s and '40s, did make pesticides on the site. Up, they did all this up until they decommissioned the site and then demolished in 2006 and 2007. Up to that time, the board, the site was under the jurisdiction of the Regional Water Board, and they had interim remedial features in place. Board, and they had interim remedial features in place for about 20 years. DTSC took over under order in 2006. RAP was approved in 2010 and 11, and in 2012, the remediation was completed with the removal of over 150,000 tons of soil, installation of a permanent passive groundwater treatment system, and implementation of an ongoing operation and maintenance plan. And then early in 2013, they did get the equivalent of an NFA, No Further Action, from the DTSC, with land use restriction, land use restriction in place. There are no restrictions on uses, but the covenant makes very clear that it does restrict interference with the interim remedial features that have been installed, and the development plan does require approval from the DTSC. So you've seen this, some of these diagrams you've seen as part of Maru's presentation. You know, this is a 3D view of our application, of our, of our program. It's expressed as a block plan with some articulation to break down the massing, but to be clear, it's not the architecture for the project. At this point, the areas on our site plan are shown as parcels. We'll talk a little bit more about those later in the presentation, but the articulation, the architecture, the modulation, none of that has been defined at that, but that's still all part of the public process. As we go through this process, you know, one of our primary objectives is to promote diversity in the project. That's consistent with the general plan and the Park Avenue overlay. This diversity is in the uses. Each parcel will have a different development program. The residential programs will vary, and we'll talk more about that in depth. The neighborhood service retail, we want the type of retail, we want things that will cause people to spend time here. And we've had a lot of feedback from the community on retail, it's very high on their list, and I, you know, feel we are on the same page in terms of what is wanted there. And the office will, you know, add a daytime population to complement the nighttime population, and we also see potential synergies between those two uses with the workers proximate to housing. There's a diversity in open space. The spaces will be publicly accessible. Our intention is to be able to appropriately define the intended use of each space, and doing that by, you know, being able to separate the spaces and interweave the development in between the open spaces to separate conflicting or incompatible uses. At the same time, doing this to support the community bike, ped, and open space objectives. There will be a diversity in building design and types. We are engaging different architects for each parcel. We hope that will promote a more organic feel for the project. We will map the project initially. As many of you know, we are pursuing all rental, but we will have the ability to change as the market dictates, and this is strictly a market-driven decision. This next slide, so this is the general plan that you've seen. You know, this is our starting point. All of the elements on this plan are included in our application. The 2.0 acres of open space, even with the swap, and we're in full agreement to do the necessary surveys to confirm that space is there. You know, this plan, again, our plan, we believe, is compliant with the general plan, with the exception of the land swap, but that is contemplated in the Park Avenue overlay. In terms of our density, we are seeking the bonus, primarily as it relates to F A R and height. As Maru mentioned, our density is roughly, you know, 86.8 units to the acre, which is about 10 units total over the base density. So, and if we do go ahead and factor in the open space, you know, there's some technical reasons we don't, but if we were to do that, which most other projects do, you know, we would bring that density down to 62 units per acre. So the F A R and height, they are above the base, and we will need to provide, pursue the bonus for those, but they're not primarily driven by density. The F A R, the more floor space, allows for a mix of units, sizes, articulation, gaps, things that can decrease the efficiency of floor plans and space utilization. Height is driven, not necessarily by density, but it's driven by the environmental restrictions on the site. Most projects have the ability to take one level of parking below grade because of the environmental restrictions. We cannot take our parking below grade, so all of our parking has to be above grade. As far as the density bonus goes for F A R and height, the things that we are pursuing, the things that we are evaluating at this stage of the process, of course, is the rehab of Building 131, providing a public park on the portion of the site zoned open space, and improving the city park, the railroad parcel, with a park in a fashion that the public has expressed, you know. The traffic calming features on Horton, we recognize the importance of the bike corridor, and we support that. We've been asked to look at improvements on Hubbard between Park and Sherwin to try to create linkage to the Park Avenue and that, and the street there. Acquiring the railroad parcel to the north, which will connect, which will grab the bridge over the Temescal Creek and connect better, provide better connection to the Greenway. A TDM plan that will include bus passes and try to promote more transit and family-friendly housing. But while striving to comply with the G P, general plan, there are several constraints we need to contend with. As many of you know, the site does have some access limitations. Its site is limited to the south and east. We are adjacent to a railroad right-of-way. The eastern edge of the site is a very important bike corridor, which we want to promote. And as many of you have heard recently, certainly in our last community meeting, the land use covenant and the installed remedial features do dictate how our site work will take place and do present the inability to go below grade. And so I just quickly wanted to provide a site plan that shows our development plan, this may be a little difficult to see, overlaid on the as-built remediation plan. So many of you asked about slurry wall. There's a slurry wall along the entire western edge of the site here. This new slurry wall was added with the remediation and extends all the way along Parcel C. There are two breaks. This remediation system is designed as a passive groundwater treatment system. So, you know, Sherwin-Williams hauled off 150,000 tons of soil on the site, but can't get everything that's in groundwater. So what remains will passively attenuate over site, and this site, this is designed to make the water take the longest path across the site, and before it leaves, the types of soils they put in place will grab those remaining arsenic contaminants in the soil before it leaves the site. So we have breaches here, we have the slurry wall, another breach, we have an interceptor wall up here that runs along the Novartis property, there's various wells. So all of these things, the land use covenant restricts us from moving or interfere with, and we will have to get DTSC approval. So to the extent something we do or something the community or the Commission asks us to do, we have to evaluate that from an engineering perspective and determine, you know, will there be any damage or impact on these remedial features and get approval from the DTSC. So with that, I'd like to hand over to Ivana and have her take you through in more detail the plan for the site.
Thank you, Joe. So the proposed concept organizes the development in four separate parcels that are with a network of diverse open spaces that is interwoven throughout the development with, you know, the city park, the Central Green, Muse, and the open space on the north end of the development. These open spaces are, our plan and intent is to, for each of them to have a distinct character and to, to help create a unique character for really each part of this development. In addition to diversity of the open space, as Joe mentioned, we're looking at probably two different, two different types of commercial uses being included here, the office space in the, in the rehab existing building, and the neighborhood-serving retail along the frontage of Parcel B. In terms of housing program, there is an intent to include three different types of housing, the workforce housing, family housing, and the professional housing. So the development is really looking to establish this as a neighborhood center and a focal, focal point for, for this part of Emeryville. As Maru mentioned earlier, you know, the initial scheme was assuming that, that Parcel D would be located at the north end of the site with a larger open space just adjacent to the Central Green. However, based on the, on the community input, this alternative scheme has been developed, which brings Parcel D development closer to the Central Green and moves the open space to the north edge of the, of the project development. We are, the project is open to your comment and input regarding which one of these two options you think that we should pursue. We think that each one of them has their own advantages. The option to move the open space all the way to the north and provides a unique opportunity to link with the city-proposed improvements of the Horton Landing Park and to anchor all the pedestrian and bicycle linkages all the way from the Greenway through the site and further on to the Bay Trail. In addition to that, our current thinking is that this area would be conducive to informal gatherings and informal play of the residents. However, it's important to note that, you know, further programming and design of each of these public spaces will be conducted in the future, and that we are really looking for your input and comments in terms of what kind of character and content these open spaces will have. The city lot along the railroad provides a unique opportunity to create a designated dog park. The other open spaces within the development would certainly not preclude dogs, but they are dedicated primarily to human use and would not be able to accommodate the space and the containment that is necessary for a, for a dog park. So, you know, as the size and the nature and the character of that dog park would be further defined, you know, in collaboration with the community, but we do think that in addition to the dog park, this site provides opportunities for some, you know, lawn, multi-use play areas for different activities. Even though very different in character, this example just shows a successful park developed in conjunction with residential along the U P R R tracks in Union City, who were involved with that, and was completed maybe a year ago. The Muse area between Building 131 and Parcel B would primarily provide the amenity for, for the office spaces in the, in the building, as well as the residential, residential units on Parcel B. This would be a quieter open space, and the Central Green is really the heart of, of this project. I would like to say that, you know, South Park was used more as an evocative image, really, for, for this space, because when you look at it in a little more detail, South Park is really primarily a green area in a larger city fabric that lacks any other open space improvements. The Central Green that we're proposing here is not necessarily park. We have two large open space green areas in the city block and the northern open space. The Central Green is really a focal point. It is a space that brings the whole community together. It is a space that brings together the commercial in Parcel B with the residential in Parcel C. And this is a section that Maru showed earlier, so in addition to the, to the, to this, you know, 50-foot-wide green space, we have the 70-foot-wide sidewalks with commercial all along the edge of Parcel B. What we see happening here is a combination and a blend of different activities that could be taking place here, which would be supporting each other and, you know, with commercial energizing the area. This, again, is Rambla from Barcelona. The space in, you know, in terms of width matches the size of the Central Green. So the, the treatment of the Central Green needs to be determined in our communication with, with all of you and the community, but these are some of the ideas of the activities that could be, that could be practiced there. So, you know, I guess I'm going backwards, sorry. There could be smaller seating areas or, you know, informal picnic areas where people could grab lunch or coffee from the retail spaces that will be situated in Parcel B, you know, observing your children play while you're having lunch. All of these activities are supporting each other. This is, the shape of the Central Green also provides for the opportunity to, on special occasions, close the traffic, close the area for traffic, and either have, you know, public market or, you know, block parties, city festivals organized in this space on, you know, on a, on an occasion. This shows a type of retail that we would hope to have in Parcel B that would activate the sidewalk, provide for, you know, pedestrian movement along the retail, and activate, as I said, the Central Green. The site is very well positioned in relation to a number of transit options. It is within 10, 10-minute walk of the Emeryville Station, 20-minute of MacArthur, MacArthur Barren, and within a five-minute walk to a number of stops by Emery Go-Round, as well as along the, you know, major bike road. In terms of circulation, the plan, the current, current intent is to provide for bicycle connection from Horton Landing along the edge of the project and connect to the Bay Trail, as well as obviously on Horton Street. Pedestrian connections can occur along the parks or through the center. There is a desire to bring Emery Go-Round into the Central Green and possibly have a stop there. And then in terms of vehicular traffic, there is an opportunity to disperse this traffic so that, you know, there will be access from Sherwin, from 45th through Horton, so that that would leave a space for implementation of some of these traffic calming measures that the community has expressed the desire for. Additional idea that could be considered is providing a potential Halleck Street connection that would provide vehicular access to, from the back and relieve some of the traffic from the Sherwin Avenue. And with that, my presentation ends, and I think Bruce will... And with that, my presentation ends and I think Bruce will...
We've, as Joe mentioned, have had numerous conversations and discussions with various interested parties regarding this project. And most recently, we've heard quite a bit, we've broken those comments into seven areas that I would say is just a starting point. We are looking for additional comment, I'm sure we'll get more, but basically what we've heard, and I just wanted to review quickly because I think it provides some additional detail for the plan that may not have come out, but relative to the density in the site plan, we've heard that Emeryville doesn't want another sterile development, another homogeneous one. And the question has been, how will this site be different? We've talked about some of those things, clearly the Central Green being a major part of it. Each one of the buildings is going to be connected to that Central Green, but then taking it a step further is to try and create a very active area. There have been comments about the size of the project, that it's too large, and what can we expect from the density of the building? Again, the project that we're proposing will be consistent with the general plan. We're looking at trying to create more and more variety through architectural styles, through different heights, through different program types for the new buildings. And finally, we've received a lot of questions about perhaps moving things around on the site. As Joe mentioned, the remediation features do provide a somewhat limiting element, specifically the slurry wall, but we are, you know, looking at land swaps and working with the city on that front. Another issue relates to the circulation and the traffic. One of the first questions related to overflow parking and how both traffic and parking will be mitigated. First and foremost, we are trying to recreate a bike-ped friendly project where people will be more inclined to walk as opposed to take their car. Having said that, we will have parking for over 900 cars in structures to accommodate this project, plus there is also going to be some on-grade parking. Relative to moving in and out of the site to the extent that we are going to have cars, we are looking at various ways to limit that. One of the ways to limit it, clearly, trying to maximize the amount of transport, public transit that's available to our residents. We also looked at, and I believe Commissioner Keller also suggested, a Halleck extension which we thought was a very interesting approach. And finally, how do we encourage alternative modes of transportation and mass transit? And right now, we're working with Emery Go-Round. We'd like to see whether or not we can create an Emery Go-Round stop on our site as well as, you know, possibly connecting it to West Oakland Bart. We're working with AC Transit regarding the F-line and finally, looking at that extension of Halleck. Another area is related to the parks and the public amenities. The Central Green, we, you know, a variety of informal uses clearly would be part of it, children's play area. It's 50-foot curb-to-curb, but almost as important, particularly relative to the use and the activity on that, is the fact that the building separation is nearly 125 feet. So, it will get a lot of light and air. The other element that I just want to point out, which is, I guess, the third point here, was that one of the neighbors of the project was concerned about, you know, these different uses and creating some separation for those uses, particularly relative to a dog park and a children's play area, which we think makes some sense and this plan would certainly accommodate. And finally, in order to activate the park and the various parks, we want to create, you know, active retail space where, you know, coffee shops or restaurants, residents can come in, get some food, and proceed to take advantage of the park as a very inviting space to, you know, rest and eat and basically participate. Relative to retail, the retail really is very important to this, unlike other projects where perhaps the city wanted retail. I think we're really pushing to generate successful retail here. And we're looking at 15,000 square feet of retail that's going to be part of Parcel B, so it's on the east side of the park, so it's getting the western sun. There's large 17-foot-wide sidewalks and landscaped areas in front of that retail to accommodate cafes and the like. And relative to the use of that retail, what types of retail we anticipate, we are going, we're currently talking to various retailers about that. We've identified a bike shop, a coffee shop, and some other groups that are interested in locating there. So, I think we can create a nice little amenity area, both for the retail and the surrounding community. We are looking at smaller shop spaces, so we won't have, you know, either big-box retail or, and we're certainly interested in staying away from formula retail. And relative to, you know, the success of the retailers, while we can't guarantee success, we're trying to create all the elements that will certainly encourage success for those retailers. And getting it right, again, first and foremost, relates to how successful the residential components will be as well as well as the commercial. So, it's very important for us and we're interested in getting your feedback on other ideas with regard to the retail as well. Construction and job creation, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, how we're going to build this, who's going to build it. We have put together a responsible contractor policy. It's based on Cal Sturz's policy, one of the largest union pension funds, and we're interested in both paying the living wage as well as local hire policies. So, that's something that we're incorporating in this project. There was some discussion about also having youth interns and the like and veterans getting involved with the construction of this project, and we'll talk to our general contractor when we get to that point about encouraging or incorporating programs to support that. And finally, housing and design. We're going to have a variety of housing, as was mentioned. And with regard to affordability, the city, as you well know, is working on a new inclusionary housing program. This will certainly be subject to that, but we're also doing housing by design, so, or affordability design. We're doing smaller units. We're actually looking at a four-bedroom, two-bath unit to encourage family-friendly housing, and we're talking to architects about different types of programs as well. But there, besides, you know, the workforce housing and the professional or, you know, more luxury-oriented housing that we're going to be incorporating, there will also be live-work spaces to engage the floor and also to help expand and improve the activity on the property. Joe had mentioned that initially, we're looking at the housing as being rental from a economic standpoint. That is what we can underwrite today. We've been involved with both condominiums as well as rental housing. And today, we're just in an environment where rental housing makes sense. That allows us to move the project forward. The project will be mapped. These projects will all be logical conversions to condominiums to the extent the condo market comes back a little stronger than it is today. And finally, I just want to emphasize the fact that we do have multiple architects that are being involved, so we do create some interest in the buildings. And taking it a step further, we're going to, you know, focus on using quality materials and a lot of diversity in terms of building heights and looks as well. So, with that, oh, and lastly, well, we're here to talk about the entitlement, and we're going to be doing traffic, air quality, and noise studies as part of the analysis for SEQA. Our hope is that we'll get entitled sometime next year, and if that goes well, we'll start the following year on construction and in two to three years thereafter, the project will be built and hopefully we'll all be able to visit. So, I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, we're certainly open for your questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any comments or, I'm sorry, questions for the applicant or their design team?
I do. In regards to the potential land swap with the railroad site, what would that look like in terms of, say, switching Parcel C with B? And have you, I'm sure you've talked about it, so could you share some of those thoughts?
Yeah, well, I believe the concept is moving what our building C onto what we currently designate as the dog park. And, you know, we can't straddle the line, so we would have to reconfigure the open space as well as the building so that they would only be on, one would be on one side and one would be on the other side. It would certainly change the infrastructure to the degree that we couldn't do the roundabouts in the way that we currently have the Central Park by virtue of the fact that we wouldn't have the same configuration relative to Halleck and relative to Hubbard. So, you know, it's out there, we've studied it, we'll continue to look at it.
And can you elaborate a little further on how the slurry wall would constrain the site and what that actually means?
Okay.
Hey, Joe.
Joe's up on environmental...
In terms of building, et cetera, and, you know, what can be on it, what can't, where, because they're mostly on the edge except for two.
There are several slurry walls in the site. Some are old, some are new. Try to find that slide.
Why can't you straddle it?
I think it's the first slide. There it is.
Yeah, there we go. So, you know, these, this is the most critical area here, of course, this slurry wall that's along the western edge. There's a clay cap placed on top of it. This wall is designed to force groundwater to continue to move. You'll see the outline of the old slurry wall here, it's still there. Water's going to back up through this breach and it's going to continue through the site and out through one of these two breaches. It's intended to travel as far as it can across the site before leaving the site. Things like, we have to build on piles here. You know, the fill, the top two layers of this site are fill. The bearing layer is a good 24 to 30 feet down, so we are going to be using a displacement column or an auger cast-type pile to support our building foundations. We need to keep those away from the slurry wall a certain distance and we've got an engineering team with Treadwall and Rollo looking at that, but we cannot risk damaging that wall. The wall cannot be impacted and allow water, groundwater, to travel through here. It has to travel through up here where these wells are to evaluate the quality of the water coming through. So, you know, straddling the wall, if there were ever a problem of the future, the wall, how would we ever get to it? So, you know, I think if we're going to look at, look at doing a swap with these parcels, I think we have to look at, you know, a complete flip going across the line. There's just, there's a lot of liability in here frankly, you know, to this wall being damaged and it's...
You're straddling it now, you would just be straddling it, for instance, with the other, another frontage to the, to Site C? I'm confused why that's...
Say, I'm straddling it now?
Well, the project Site C is now straddling the wall, correct?
The project Site C, the foundations here will be pulled back to not be on this wall. They cannot be on this wall. They can't, we cannot build...
So, it would be, it would be the same if it was, if there was a land swap, for instance?
If we moved completely over to the other side of the line, but we can't sit on the line.
Right, okay, got it.
We need access to it in the future if it ever needs maintenance, so, okay.
Got it, thank you.
Can I, I mean, I, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna, I have another question about the slurry wall, so I was just gonna jump in at this point, it seemed prudent. So, I was a little unclear, so the water, water is supposed to travel as far as possible across the site, but what, what actually happens to the contaminants that are currently on the site?
The site, as I mentioned, there were 150,000 tons of soil removed, and most of the soil that it was replaced with was a low permeability backfill, a more clay-type soil, so the groundwater, you know, the groundwater will move at a rate, I'm not quite sure what the rate is, but over time, as it moves through this backfill, this, it will bind up in this soil, this low permeability soil. And so, that is the attenuating feature.
But, and then soil will remain in place once the, once anything has bound to it?
It will remain there. It's down below the Vado Zone, meaning it's down below groundwater. So, you know, the one restriction is, you know, we can't use the groundwater for drinking. You're going to find that very common in many of these treated sites in Emeryville and elsewhere, so. But DTSC is very confident that all of the source material, again, 150,000 tons of soil, so it will naturally attenuate over time because the source, this big area here where you see this line, that's the pit. That was, you know, as deep as 25 feet. That's where the pesticides with arsenic were made, that's where the root of the problem was, that's gone. So, and there was enough material put in to grab on to what's left, is, you know, layman's...
So, currently, the, currently the site is on a podium, and if you're standing on Sherwin Avenue, the site is, I think, a foot and a half to two feet above the sidewalk at Sherwin, and, and then that kind of comes around the corner and connects to the slurry wall at the southwest corner. So, I'm just trying to understand how you're going to drop the site down at Sherwin to meet Sherwin.
Okay. The idea actually is that the site would ramp up to the Central Green, so we're trying not to dig down. Joe had mentioned in his comments that one of the reasons for the increased height is because we're trying to stay out of the ground. In fact, we're trying to work with the existing grades on site, so Sherwin is roughly, Sherwin and Hubbard is roughly at 11 feet. The plan, as we're looking at, is the Central Green would be at plus 15 feet, so you would actually be ramping up, that would be elevated.
So, so right in here, you'd be, you'd be taking out this current, this existing retaining wall and ramping down to...
Correct.
Down to Hubbard here, yeah.
We'll lose about a foot when we remove the concrete. We're going to remove the concrete, grind it up on site, reuse it, the base under that, that section is about 12 to 15 inches, so the site will lower some, but there is a restriction on how deep we can go. Again, our foundations, the types of deep footings we use cannot change the direction of the groundwater flow. And so, we are encouraged, strongly encouraged, to put it mildly, by DTSC to stay high. So, we will be in a net import situation in this project, we will not be off hauling dirt.
Another element of this plan that I want to just emphasize, and we haven't thought about it, about swapping the dog park for Parcel C, but certainly enters in, is that we are limited to three and a half inches of rainfall going into the site, permeating the site in a given year. So, you know, a big storm, we're going to have to treat our water off-site or treat our water on-site, but it can't go through the site. So, we have very different sustainability requirements relative to dealing with that issue as well.
So, when you're showing Parcel C extending out over the slurry wall, this would be a second floor...
That's going to re-treat.
Yeah. And by the way, the Parcel C, Parcel B, those are just, you know, lines, that's not architecture.
They're not building footprints.
Yeah, so...
Right, but the foot, but it can't extend over that. But Bruce is right, you know, our stormwater controls are going to be different than your typical site that's governed by NPDES where you're, you know, we are going to, if this is, we're, this is going to be a special project... is, we're, this is going to be a special project, and, you know, we will have mechanical devices on site to treat water. Anywhere we use a natural treatment device, it's going to have to be lined to keep that water from percolating into the ground.
I'll have two quick questions. Have you guys looked at purchasing the Novartis site, the PUD that's adjoining your site?
I think the answer has to be no, but relative to that, the PUD does not allow for residential on that site.
Okay. And then on the meeting on the 16th, and I may have misunderstood this, but when you guys were talking about the types of housing, it sounded like you were going to put one type in one building, one type in another, and one type in another. Is that still your thought?
I think that is generally the way the buildings would relate to each other, yes.
I have a concern with that, because what brings to mind to me is 1970s project, that you're going to put all the people of low income in one building that has the worst location in the site? And I believe in maximizing your value, certainly like penthouses and things like that, but I think it's been found that intermixing people creates more synergy, creates more understanding and diversity, rather than subjugating people here and putting the better people here.
No, we're fans of inclusionary housing, and virtually all the projects we've built in the Bay Area have included that, and I think from a socialization standpoint, it works. As it relates to this property in particular, I would say that, you know, we are looking at the project right now as a whole, but relative to the family-friendly housing, relative to the executive or professional housing, relative to the more value or workforce-oriented housing, those would be distinct elements. Whether or not there would be affordability in each one of those, I guess we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. It seems to me that, just in thinking about the, I mean, you've stated sort of that South Park was your inspiration for the Central Green. Just in thinking about it and looking at the images that were shown, it seems to me maybe a more appropriate comparison would be, I don't know the street exactly, but in, in the Mission Bay development in San Francisco, there is, there is sort of a linear park that is bound on each side by a one-way street. It's off of Third Street. I don't know the, what street it is, but it seems more appropriate in scale and in use to, to this.
We will look at that. So if you have any more details about which street it is, let us know, but we'll try and find that as well.
I have some photographs of it, not with me, but, yeah.
Yeah, my, my general observation about Mission Bay would just be, the blocks are absolutely huge, so they're much longer than what we're dealing with here, but nonetheless, we'll take a look at that.
And then also, so during the presentation, it was stated that the city's parcel provided sort of a unique opportunity, or, you know, there were certain reasons why a dog park was appropriate there, and I'm just sort of wondering what that is and why. I mean, it seems to me, just sort of looking at your plan and the site, like any of the open spaces, except for maybe the Central Green, could accommodate a dog park just as easily.
It, I think it just, conflicting uses. You know, dog parks, for all the best intents, are, you know, not necessarily green spaces after a while. So, you know, does that go in the front yard? Does that go in the backyard? You know, we had a little girl here at the community meeting who wanted to make sure there was separation, certainly by fence, but, you know, again, there's just inherently conflicts. I'm not a dog owner, but, you know, we go down to a park nearby our house that has a dog park, and there's just inherently conflicts when you're in that area, so we thought, here's an opportunity to truly separate those uses and not create conflict with the more intimate types of uses we want to see in the Central Green.
I have a question. Can you talk more about your choice to have the buildings situated in such a lengthy fashion and not breaking them up into individual buildings on the individual parcels?
Again, what we're showing as B, C, and D are just planning areas. We don't have vertical elements yet that we've defined. I mean, we've done some basic massing to see whether or not this program works. So that's the extent of it at this stage of the game. I would say that we like the relationships of those buildings to the Central Green and to the various park elements, and we are also, you know, I suppose, sensitive to the urban grid and trying to, you know, the, the street from, well, going from Park to Sherwin and/or from Park down Horton to 45th is, you know, one street's 400 feet, one street's 600 feet, we're around 500 feet. Kind of felt like we were keeping that rhythm that's already in Park Avenue.
Just for everybody's information, I believe, was it you, Commissioner Moss, who was mentioning the street or the park space in Mission Bay?
Yes.
I believe that would be Mission Bay Boulevard, North and South.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since there are none, at this time, we'll open the podium up for public comment. Thank you all for coming tonight, and in the interest of hearing everyone's comments and not being here till midnight, we are going to ask that everyone keep their comments to, up to three minutes.
And please sign in at the clipboard over here on the.
If you have not already done so.
If you have not, yeah.
You don't, you, you don't need to sign in before you speak.
You can just sign in after you speak. So I think this would probably work best if you sort of formed a line, and then, then we're ready with the next person when, when someone's done speaking.
Sharon, excuse me, Sharon Wilshire, Community Liaison for the 45th Street Artists Cooperative. And last night, we, was our semi-annual community meeting at the Co-op, and one of the concerns that was expressed at the meeting, because we are immediate neighbors to this project, had to do with the traffic that will be generated by the development. And it seems that, you know, this is perhaps partially due to the density and/or to the limitations of the space. All these things have been mentioned earlier tonight, but with railroad tracks to the east and Novartis to the north. So we would definitely be in favor of a lower density rather than any potential higher density that could be realized through bonuses. Now, I'm just going to make, have a question, just as an individual, as a resident, and an observation. And I'm just curious, with that parcel swap in the north, putting the, moving that little park area north, that, what would it be facing to the east? Is it facing what I used to call the Rifkin property, or the back of the Novartis parking lot? And is the access really mostly north and south? And would any east-west be perhaps a passageway at 53rd or something? I'm not sure about exactly how that works. And then my observation is that just this evening, I guess a little before 6 o'clock, I was leaving the driveway at the Artists Co-op in, for our 45th Street building onto Horton Street, and I was trying to turn, I was going to go south, and as I inched my way out, was almost hit by three different cars that were heading north on Horton Street, just coming from the stop sign there. So I see that there's also some access, east-west access that seems to be proposed north of the, of that stoplight at 45th Street, stoplight, stop sign in between 53rd, and so it, and the driveway falls right in the middle of it. So thinking that tonight, there was already that sort of going on with traffic, it just seems that this would be exacerbated by that, so, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome to the new appointees. Ken Bukowski for Emeryville Property Owners Association. I would really like to see you give some bonus points to subsidize the retail. I think making sure that the retail works is really important. If the retail is at high cost, then you're going to have chain stores. Those are the only people who can afford it. So I think the retail is a very important aspect of this project, so please give some bonus points for retail subsidy. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. I'm going to use my time today to introduce myself and the Emeryville Warehouse Lofts Ad-Hoc Committee. Members of our committee will later address the specifics of what we submitted to you earlier this week. I'm Donna Briskin, and I'm an owner resident at Emeryville Warehouse Lofts, 1500 Park. Full disclosure, my unit faces directly onto Sherwin. I've been excited about the possibilities of this development since the Park Avenue District Plan came in and since the improvements that the city made on Park Avenue. So I think this parcel is a really exciting and important parcel to make that plan come into a reality. I, in the summer, I casually put out the word "people" in our building to see if I could find like-minded people who cared about the success. Success being defined as adding value to the community, enhancing the neighborhood, and also recognizing that the developers needed to be successful, too. As a result, we immediately got a strong, very strong ad-hoc committee who you'll hear from tonight. It's the first time, I'm taking this time because it's the first time you've heard from us, but we will be here throughout the process, and we want to make sure you know who we are. We don't officially speak for the HOA, but they are supportive of us and know that we exist. We all live and work in the area, in the building and have diverse backgrounds. Patty Jeffrey, who was a planning commissioner here for many years, Rob Arias, who is the Evil Eye, Krisna Hanks, who owns the Pilates Studio in front, so we've got, again, different views, and then three of us who are longtime residents of the building. Our approach is to work early and constructively with the developers and the city, and not to come in later to criticize what's been done, but we'd like to be an active voice during the process. We want to advocate for the spirit of the general plan and the Park Avenue plan, not just the letter of the law there. We want to energize more people in our building to get involved, and there are additional people here, there were earlier in the evening. And finally, we want to speak out on the major issues that we see as they come up. So far, we've met with the developers, and I was really thrilled to see that we had a lot of the feedback that we gave them was incorporated in Bruce's feedback tonight. We gave them at their request a list of retail that we would not only support conceptually, but in reality, if they, if it came into the neighborhood. We submitted the issues to you that we've seen so far with the limited information that we've had, and we're learning more every day. And those issues are, which you'll hear about, are to remain, to retain the character of the neighborhood in design and architectural quality, the density of the project, and the resulting traffic and circulations that that presents, and the park and urban spaces, and including the need for neighborhood, neighborhood-oriented retail spaces. Mike McConnell also submitted to you a separate document on the height limit. I think he'll talk to that tonight. Anyway, again, my purpose tonight is just to introduce us, get familiar. We hope by the end of this process, we'll all be good friends and we'll have a successful project. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Mike McConnell. You have the document I sent around earlier called "Respect." I have copies of it if you want. And I thought I would focus tonight. I walk this neighborhood three times a day, and, and the neighborhood, I've been here a long time, and it's just, it began at the Emeryville Warehouse Lofts as taking an awful old warehouse, where I think Sabrina Landris, that she used to, was a squatter's place. She used to hang out there when she was a child. And it's kind of radiated out due to the, the beautiful Park Avenue development and the, the improvements to the street. But the character of the neighborhood is, is really delicate. You've got Powell Street and all that hubbub up there, and the big buildings and all that going on up there. 40th Street, very active, south of 40th, you know, zoo of traffic and busyness, and kind of this quiet area in between that can, that this can, it's inevitable it's going to be developed, so we understand that. But it can be done, I'm encouraging that the more it can be developed in, in recognition of and in harmony with the existing uses in the neighborhood, the better. Joe and Bruce have, as I, as Donna mentioned, have met with us. We're encouraged. The Halleck Street addition tonight was a revelation. I mean, that's, that's, that's new, and that's, we've been hoping for something like that. That's really great, because Hubbard is, if you look at Hubbard, it's, you know, it's already really busy. Go there at 8:30 in the morning when the trucks pull up, and it's, you can't even drive us one car down there, much less have it be the main access street for a major development. But if you look at the neighborhood, you've got one-story and it's two-story buildings in the area. And if you look at the way that David Baker designed the Emeryville Warehouse Lofts, that was a three-story building going to four stories in the middle of the block, and then back to three stories as it comes up to Sherwin. When they built those units along the front, along Park Avenue, they built them two stories. Why? Because that's the size of this, the building across the street. When they got torn down toward the Pelco Building, they even put a little curve up in the wall to kind of mirror the way the Pelco Building has triangulation at the roof. It's a beautiful thing. And then when they did the, the Blue Star Corner, the same thing, recognizing the height limits about three stories in the area, they did that. And then, yes, there's a, there's a fifth and a sixth story technically legal in the neighborhood, but it, it's way inside. It's only in the middle of the building. It's only six units, and it is corrugated iron, and it kind of floats up there visually, and you have to get a couple of blocks away until you can even see it from the street. You can't see that, except maybe a little, a little pinpoint. So visually, the neighborhood is three stories. The Artists Co-op is one story, and the, the parcel A, the existing building, is, I believe, 55, 45 feet, but if you take the fact that it's really four feet above the other end of the block, it's really equivalent to 50 feet. The Park Avenue building is 40, is 40 feet. So I would encourage, I would encourage a limitation of 40 feet along Sherwin Avenue. So it doesn't, so it's in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood, and 40 feet really is the height limit in that area. Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Laramore, and I live at 1500 Park Avenue. And my concerns are about the traffic, the effect of the traffic. I'm totally against some Halleck. I'm, I'm interested in keeping the peacefulness of the Park Avenue Plaza, city, little city park plaza, connected with the dog park area. That area is heavily used by pedestrians and more, you know, recently by trucks starting work on potentially this development, I guess, putting in sewers and stuff. But, but it's a peaceful place, and I think that we ought to try and keep that, and I would encourage use of barriers, the way that Berkeley uses them, to, to limit the through traffic in that area. I, I don't like the idea of fully distributing all traffic through all, all of the streets. I think you, I prefer to have some, there are already, there's more heavily used, traffic is much more heavy on Horton Street, and of course Hollis, and I think we ought to keep the heavier traffic streets, heavier traffic, and keep the lighter traffic streets lighter, try and maintain that. That contributes to the culture of the area, so I'm hoping that you won't throw that out. And, let's see, and I guess that's my main concern, and, you know, the noise of, it, it sounds like you're, the developers are saying that they don't want to move the garage door from the Sherwin Avenue, building C, and of building C because of the, the wall that's along the back. I think the proposal was to push it to the back of the building, of building C. I'd say, cut it off and keep it just on the internal section of that, the building where it could, I saw on the map, the traffic flow map showed, you know, an entrance on Sherwin Avenue into building C and on the other end into building C. I'd suggest keeping it closed on Sherwin Avenue and just having it on the north end of building C. That's it.
Thank you.
Good timing, wow.
Hi, my name is Krisna Hanks, and I'm the owner of East Bay Pilates, which is on Park Avenue, and I'm also a member of the Economic Development. And I'm also a member of the Economic Development Committee, and I'm also a member of Donna's Ad Hoc Committee for the Warehouse Lofts. And I've been a business owner in Emeryville since 2005. And I see this new development at Sherwin Williams as another chance to encourage more locally owned and operated small businesses in Emeryville. Emeryville's residents reflect an international artistic, age-diverse urban population, so retail that caters to this would be inspiring and attractive to residents and non-residents. I think it would also enhance socially and economically existing small businesses like my own, as well as encourage longevity to those businesses in our city. And as a business owner, I understand the importance of having other successful businesses in the area. For instance, we service Pixar. We also run a program there. Businesses help support each other. And the clients that we service at our business, I think, would exactly participate and support those types of businesses, like cafes, restaurants, food shops, some unique boutiques, certainly art galleries and anything art-orientated, and more creative sort of retail projects. We're very encouraged. We have also spoken with the developers, and it seems that they also are keeping those ideas in mind. But I think that it's important that you understand that we, as business owners, also feel that need for other, more businesses to come here. I would slightly disagree with Ken's idea that they need to be subsidized, as someone who's bootstrapped their own business, but I do think that it needs to be affordable and those accommodations for businesses that could use different types of spaces. And I think that's really important to keep the character of Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you.
I prepared a presentation. If I can back out here. Sorry, I use a Mac. What is this operating system? Ah, of course. It is the EGR.
Both, right? You need both?
Yeah, that's the one.
Is it the one or the other one, too?
Just the EGR one for now.
Okay, okay. So you just go.
Thank you. And I also have some hard copies of these for you, just in case. I'm also on the Ad Hoc Committee for the Emeryville Warehouse Lofts. My name is Rob Arias, ten-year resident of the Emeryville Warehouse Lofts. I'm also on the Park Avenue District Committee, and I write a blog called The Evil Eye, if you haven't logged on yet. I already presented this, actually, to the EGR Committee recently. I think it was back in June, as an idea to encourage public transportation use. And I think this project is going to be very important. 460 units, 1,000 cars. What do we do to encourage public transportation? And one of them -- I took a formal poll on the blog. It's still live. It's still active. It's still something you can check out, but I think the data is pretty compelling that if Emmerground went to West Oakland, a lot more people would use it. I'm finding out that upwards of 70% to 75% of the people that are using Emmerground are going to San Francisco. And my thoughts are that when this development is complete, you know, quite a bit of those people that are being priced out of San Francisco and are going to move into here.
Can you address the commission, please?
Be commuting to San Francisco. So let's go through the poll real quick. As you know, currently, you have to take Emmerground to MacArthur Bart, which would be over in this area over here, and then get on the San Francisco train, go to 19th, go to 12th, all the way around to West Oakland, get in the tunnel to get it to the Embarcadero Station. If Emmerground went to West Oakland, it would be a direct south route down Mandela Parkway, and it would save at least, conservative estimates, 25 to 45 minutes round trip. These are some numbers from the poll. The participants, 71% were residents, 13% were students and employees, 14% were neighbors of adjacent cities, Oakland, Berkeley, I guess, where they -- where they're going and coming from. 77% were going to SF. And if they had to pay -- this is a little supplement question I threw in there. If they had to pay to park in Emeryville, 55% would use Emmerground more. So just another way to encourage people to take local transportation, charge for parking. So what if Emeryville offered West Oakland's service? 72% say they would use Emmerground more and drive less. And what about people -- and what about SF commuters and visitors? 78% would use EGR more and drive less. And what if it came at the expense of a MacArthur, you know? Say we had to reduce a line at MacArthur in order to supplement West Oakland. A slight downtick from 78 to 73, but still a lot of support there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I leave this with you?
Yeah. Give them to me. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Adam Mitchell. I'm a new resident at 1500 Park, not necessarily part of the Ad Hoc Committee, but I might be. Since I know you can hear from a lot of us, I'll try to bullet point my thoughts. One, Sherwin and Hubbard, and also to a lesser extent, Halleck, not really appropriate streets for the volume of traffic that would be coming through here. That's a lot of people's only window to the outside, people along the Emeryville Lofts. So they're going to turn that into the Champs-Elysees for this development. Also, keeping the character of the neighborhood is very important. I think most of us in the neighborhood would be against the bonus points in density. It's already -- it's a great piece of land that needs to be developed. We want something nice to happen there, but any more than what is standard by right wouldn't be right. And I guess I'll let my neighbors carry on with the rest.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Wolfe. I am a resident of 1500 Park Avenue located south of the Sherwin Williams site. I am also part of the group brought together by Donna Briskin to discuss the Sherwin Williams development impact on our neighborhood. Please reference the report you received earlier this week from Patty Jeffrey for a complete list of concerns. I want to briefly touch on our concern about parking and traffic. The huge proposed building on Parcel C has a garage entrance pointing directly at the Emeryville Warehouse Lofts. Buzzers, headlights, car noise will be focused directly on these units. It would be more neighborly to have a garage entrance pointing away from the existing condos. Street parking is very minimal in this corner of Park Avenue District. The Badminton Club on the corner of Sherwin and Hubbard takes every available parking spot till late at night. The Emeryville Warehouse Lofts, the Artist Co-op, and the Blue Star Corner take all other street parking on Halleck, Hubbard, and Horton. The Sherwin Williams proposal is for around 700 parking spots for 460 units and approximately 85,000 square feet of commercial development. We commend them for their limiting their parking around their central green corridor, and we commend them for proposing public parking in their garage. But we think 700 spaces is inadequate and would encourage the developer to a lot more for off-street parking. There's an addenda to this. The last time I heard Joe give his presentation, it was 700 parking spots. Tonight, it's 900. We're going in the right direction. Traffic congestion is a major concern. The proposed Sherwin Williams development has their main flow of traffic heading south across Sherwin Street and down Hubbard Street. This might be upwards of 700 cars a day. There are 75 units of my building facing Sherwin Street and Hubbard Street. These streets to the south of Sherwin Williams are small and not designed as major traffic arteries. In addition, Hubbard Street has loading docks for Pacific Flooring and the Furniture Warehouse with trucks obstructing traffic at all times of the day. Our opinion is the flow of traffic should be directed north, encouraging traffic flow through the non-residential areas along Horton, Stanford, Hollis, and a direct route to the freeways. This may conflict with the bicyclists, but we feel the bikes should be routed on the Greenway through the development, and Horton should be primarily for cars. This is a nice neighborhood, the Park Avenue District. It's the last quiet corner of mixed use in Emeryville. Sherwin Williams is presently a big, empty space. We sincerely hope its development will become a legacy to good planning.
Yeah. Wow. Quiet.
Hello. My name is Brian Hoard, and I've been living in Emeryville since 1999. I've lived in the Emeryville Warehouse, so a lot of people are here that I know. And in 2007, we moved to the development called Blue Star Corner. That's on Halleck Street, so that's also very close to this. I'm a fan of density, so I think density adds vibrancy to a neighborhood. It's the thing that attracts the kinds of services and businesses that you want in a community. So I think the massing of the buildings is good. We've been looking at this development like this without -- with only minor changes now for years. So I've been involved in the remediation for the site and the entire path for what the site has taken. So I just wanted to support the idea of density. That being said, we don't want to end up with something -- I hope nobody's hear from that -- from, like, Bay Street. Bay Street is homogeneous. It's -- there's something that looks a little cheap about it. So that's my feelings about this particular development. Mostly, I am very supportive of it. We'll see how it goes. Traffic is going to be a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Jeffrey, 1500 Park Avenue, and also a member of the Emeryville Warehouse Loft Ad Hoc Committee. Good evening, commissioners and staff. It's nice to see you all. My neighbors have spoken about so many important things that we have concerns about relating to this project, but also there are a lot of great things we see in this project that we're supportive of. I'm going to talk just very briefly on density. The project, in my opinion, is too dense. At -- I would have preferred something a little less dense when I was on the planning commission, but it didn't go that way. By right, the project under the general plan can go with 451 units. The applicant's proposing 460 units. It's only nine more units, but that equates to probably 15 to 20 more vehicle trips a day. So I would really like for the commission to consider the by right and not increase it even to 460 units with density bonuses. As we indicated in our little write-up that we presented to you, the density within the area is much lower to the south, which includes the Emeryville Warehouse, and then to the east. It's 50 by right and 60 dwelling units per acre with density bonus. So I'd really like for you to consider that. This area has marvelous historic buildings, not so marvelous, you know, one- and two-story buildings, but they still are part of the character of the area. So we're really hoping that you will consider the overall quality and experience that we as residents and new residents and workers will have when they're working and living in the Park Avenue District. Density translates into traffic. And one of the things that I would like you to consider, Marie presented recommendations for you to consider this evening, and I would like to give you one more recommendation to consider. And that is, is the project area infrastructure adequate to support the residential density that's proposed for this project, and particularly the local streets in the immediate area? The site does not have good access. You know, that's a given. It's a site constraint. We need to really look at what can be accommodated in the area, what will work for the site and what will work for the neighbors. So I hope you will consider that in your deliberations this evening. And then one last thing. I just wanted to ask if we could see a cross-section at some point in time at the entrance to the project on Hubbard at Sherwin Williams? I'm curious to see what the ramp is going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kim Steinbacher, also 1500 Park Avenue. I am actually not a member of the Ad Hoc Committee, but I am here as a representative of the HOA Board, and I wanted to affirm that our board has been kept informed by the Ad Hoc Committee, and we actually support everything they've submitted. We think they've done a very thoughtful job. We appreciate that they're doing it in a constructive manner. And so I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the points that our residents have already made, but I wanted to make it clear they are actually -- they're very modest about it, but they are representing more people than are here even this evening. Then on a personal level, as a resident, I wanted to pass along a few comments since I live on a street-level unit right on Hubbard, near the corner of Sherwin. So I can confirm that there is a lot of truck traffic right now for loading at the businesses along Hubbard, so I think that's going to be a challenge. That should be approached very carefully as the project moves forward. And I also think having three points of ingress and egress along Sherwin Avenue is too much for that street to handle. I'm also a bike commuter, so I travel along Horton Avenue every day on my bike to work. And I will love the idea of switching to the bike path and the Greenway through the development, so I think that's actually going to alleviate some of the bike traffic on Horton, and I'm really excited by that. So I'd reiterate a point that was already made, which is really making sure you have a lot of east-west access to both the amenities of the bike path and the central green, so it's not just long blocks that you have to travel and then make a U-turn and backtrack for. And then finally, I wanted to pass along one little thing we've learned at our building, which is we did not add enough good, secure bike locking spots in our building. So we have some racks in our garage. Our residents have overwhelmed the racks. They are also not secure. So if you want to encourage people to use their bikes instead of driving in and out of the development all the time, putting in some good, secure storage for bikes will actually encourage the residents to use them more frequently. And so if you're focused on easy access in and out of the development and good, secure storage, I think that'll really help on the transportation side. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Donahue. I'm a member of the Emeryville Artist Co-op, adjoining this proposed site, and I'm also on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. And we have looked at this site as -- on our committee, and we had a number of suggestions, some of which have been spoken about tonight. The problem of the path taking the majority of bicycle traffic on Horton is that Halleck doesn't really connect very well to Mandela. And the likelihood of cyclists using it is not that great because of that connection problem. It goes underneath the Fortieth Street Bridge, which has got some nice things to be said about it, but the connection from beach to wood is just basically -- it's a no-man's land of potholes and undeveloped area. That's a problem. Horton Street bicycle traffic is significant. It's approaching auto traffic. Bicycle traffic is heading down Mandela a lot, and Horton has ended up being the street, and we've made it a bicycle boulevard. Our committee has a plan that we received an award for right over there. And part of that plan is to keep Horton Street as a bicycle boulevard, which means doing traffic calming and, in the case of traffic today, reducing it by about 500 trips a day. If this site could have easy access to bicycles, not more parking, but less parking and have that parking unbundled, it might create a lot less traffic in and out of the site because people would use their bicycles. They'd walk. They wouldn't necessarily need a car if you had mandatory Emmerground going to West Oakland and you had other traffic-oriented development aspects designed into this basic concept. One last comment I had about moving the Central Child Park, as it's seen right there, to the north and adjoining to the potential pedestrian bridge is that the park, as it is now seen on the screen, would be getting a lot of good south light. If you put it on the other side of the taller 100-foot building, it's going to be in shadow. So I would think that the park, as I'm seeing it on the screen right now, is a better design concept. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Ospinoza, a resident of 1500 Park Avenue. And I'm fortunate enough to actually enjoy the live-work characteristic of the building. I get to work at home a couple days a week. And I won't go over the general concept of it's just too much traffic there on Sherwin, but I would reiterate that that should be studied very carefully with 900 parking spaces plus further on-grade parking in the development. In addition to the desire to bring people in and out for commercial purposes, plus the residents, that's a lot of trips per day. Can't help but thinking it'll be 1,000 or more, or whatever number you come up with with the traffic study. And pushing three entrances onto Sherwin doesn't seem to be prudent, given the width and the east-west orientation of Sherwin. Any vehicles coming out onto Sherwin from the end cap exits from the buildings would have to make multiple stops and accelerations to achieve a northwest transit through the city, which is, you know, that's either going to be Horton or Hubbard there. Hubbard is very poorly suited to exiting onto 40th Street, I'm sure that you'll see that, trying to get T-bones into another development. And where are you going to go? You're going to make a right or a left? How are you going to get out? How long is that line going to be in the morning? How's that going to work? Versus your other street, which does have connection to Mandela. Finally, with respect to the traffic concerns and having traffic circulating through that neighborhood, I urge the commission to consider the original plan that 1500 Park was built on and approved for, which was live-work, and also as an adaptive reuse of an older building. So the units do not have air conditioning, and they rely on passive cooling, which is green, and it also forces the windows to be open to take advantage of the cool weather, which means our noise comes directly from the outside. So 1,000 car trips passed a day, whether you're on second floor or first floor, whatever floor, you're going to be hearing all of that. And at the nighttime, you're also going to be dealing with the light pollution coming in and out for any lights that are focused onto the development itself, and that doesn't seem very neighborly. That brings me to my last point, which is the setback from Sherwin, which I'm a little bit concerned. I realize that the planning is still preliminary and the architect's drawings are not in, but it doesn't seem to be very neighborhood-friendly as to how it relates to the rest of Emeryville. It seems to be internally focused. And I'm wondering how it's going to relate to the building I'm in or buildings around it versus looking inward. It'd be nice to see something better, perhaps a larger sidewalk connecting it to the, from the middle green to the dog park to encourage people to transit between the two, where the benches, like we have on Park Avenue. Frankly, that's a wonderful piece of the neighborhood. It really attracted me there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about a few issues that haven't been talked about here tonight. This project being primarily residential is not going to make the city any money. We collectively, we, the people of Emeryville, are not going to benefit financially by this project. Residents in Emeryville actually take in more in city services than they pay to the city. This project is resident-heavy, although there is some office space and some little tiny bit of retail, so that'll perhaps offset that. So it's probably about a wash. So we're not going to make any money off of this. So that really compels us to look carefully at this. Why are we doing this project if we're not benefiting? The developer needs to show very clear benefit for the rest, the existing neighbors and the city as a whole. And what they've shown us is the central green, which is, you know, it's basically a glorified median, in my opinion. And then a dog park that we already own, that they're going to plant some grass and trees on. I just think it's not enough. Because they're proposing to put basically 1,000, increasing our city by a tenth, abouting about 1,000 people. It's maybe 1,000 vehicle trips a day. And so it's just not a good trade. I think that we're not, I think we're on the losing end of this. We're not benefiting financially. We're generating a huge amount of traffic, so that's the downside. The upside is the central green and the dog park. It's just not a fair trade. So furthermore, even though we have a general plan that by rights that allows almost as much density as they're asking, the state law of California only says that we legally have to give this developer about 30 units per acre. Now, he's asking for almost 90 units per acre, so that's essentially a huge gift that we're giving him, which is fine. I like giving gifts. I think it's wonderful to give gifts, but it's also wonderful to receive gifts. So if we're going to give him this gift, we should be getting something back, more than the central green and the dog park. And so what we clearly need, the minimum of, is sort of a new paradigm of TDNs, Transit Demand Management ideas. So basically, what we have to, we have to reduce the traffic that this project is generating because it's such a huge downside with so little upside being designed in. So I'm proposing, basically, we're going to, we should need to look at this in a new way. We needed to look at, these residents are going to be bicyclers, bus drivers, and bart-takers. They're not going to be drivers. So it's a new, sort of a new, we need to look at this in a new way. So the developer needs to give, for instance, bus passes, for two passes for every person for every, for every day, for every single resident. I like the idea of the developer should subsidize Emery Go-Round to go to West Oakland Bart. That's a good TDM. The developer should help fund the bicycle pedestrian bridge across railroad tracks. That's another good TDM. And I guess I'm out of time, but think of this as a gift to this developer. We should get something back better than what's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, with that, we will close the public comment period, and we will bring this back to the commission for discussion.
Sean, could we take a quick break?
Sure, yeah.
A minute?
Just real quick, like, two-minute break.
Thanks.
All right, so I think what would be the most efficient is to go through these staff, these sort of recommended staff discussion points. I'd like to sort of just go through them in order, and if we, you know, we can just be as brief as possible with our comments, just so that the applicant can get feedback sort of about what the, you know, the majority commission opinion is. And then at the end, we can open it up for any other, anything else we want to discuss. So if we want to just go, we'll start with, is the proposed mix of uses appropriate for the site? And we can just go down the, go down the line.
You get to go first.
I feel that it is.
Okay. My opinion is that it's heavy on the residential, a little too heavy. I mean, I think it came out to be something like 85% residential, 15% commercial office. And I think that it's, there needs, we need to look at balancing that out a bit more.
If we're talking about percentages, I think it's about right. If we're talking about actual volume, I'm not sure I agree with it, so.
What do you mean by?
So, for instance, well, everything relates to everything else, but there, because of the proposed density, I do believe that there's potential problems. But in terms of percentages of the uses, that makes sense to me.
Got it, okay. I think that the, I think as long, if the central green, as long as that is part of the project, I'd like to see at least a little bit of commercial on the other side of the green. I think that's, that's something actually that's really important in South, the South Park example. And I think that synergy needs to be there. And then also, I would also really love to see any, anything on the ground floor, especially on the central green, to be flex space at a minimum of, you know, resident, if it's residential, it should have high ceilings so that it could flex to commercial retail spaces in the future.
And I think, because of my presentation, I'm going to pretty much address all these, so in the element of saving time, I'll save all my comments for that.
Okay. All right, so is the proposed siting of parcels and buildings acceptable? Yeah, I actually, I have some thoughts to share on that, which I'm going to sort of hold till the end, so I don't know.
Well, I'm having trouble with this, breaking this down like this, because everything relates to everything else. So I actually just prefer to go through my points and like, sort of what Stephen's talking about.
Others agree? Yeah? Okay. All right, then we, let's do that.
It's just, it's too hard to take it in.
Okay, so just.
Context.
I think that's, that is an appropriate comment. I just try, during your comments, try to sort of make sure that you hit on all those issues.
And one thing I would request, what we're attempting to do here is to follow the commission's direction previously about how to conduct study sessions, which is, you know, the staff lists the issues and you discuss them, and then at the next time we come back, we remind you what they were, what you said, and how the applicant has responded. So if during the course of this discussion, there appears to be any, you know, important issue that it appears that the commission doesn't have a consensus about, it'd be nice if that could be flagged somehow, maybe do a straw poll on that, whatever it is. Thanks.
Okay, so maybe, maybe then after everyone gives their comments, we can sort of revisit these things, and if anything's unclear, we'll take a straw vote.
Going down the line?
Yeah, go ahead and start us off.
Someone click up in the, I just had a little visual to help. It's called, I think it's Brad's Visual.
That makes it easy.
There you go. These were just a few markups that I had. I think a lot of people have mentioned having some kind of, you know, opening up this access through here, and I'd like to see something along those lines, whether it be breezeways or actually separating the buildings. I know you've got concerns about doubling up on elevators or lobbies, but if there's a way to make that work, that would be great. I'd, I've heard a lot of comments about the scale of the buildings over here on the south side, and I do feel that the engagement of this neighborhood is key and is maybe slightly, at least the way that this has been presented to date, it feels a little bit less represented than maybe needs to be. I do have concerns about that driveway from parcel C into the garage, you know, the garage, parcel C driveway. Like to see an alternative approach to that entrance. Would like to see a step back along Sherwin here. And then, just one thing that I, you know, I saw the version where this is, you know, parcel D is completely moved over here, and then there's the version where it's pulled back here. I don't know if there's a compromise where we're keeping some kind of a park here and also opening this up here. I would like to see, and I think some of your renderings show, parcel D stepping down as you move towards the north, and I think that's important. And then also having some community uses on the, maybe that roof, if that's a two-story area, and that's what these numbers represent, and they're not, they're just thoughts, but a two-story area maybe here, facing that park that has some community uses. And then trying to get some kind of more, you know, better visual connection through to this dog park, because, I mean, obviously, it being a dog park pushed off by the railroad tracks, you know, off to the back by the railroad tracks, it just, it really feels kind of less, you know, unconnected or disconnected from the rest of the site. So having, you know, these could be overhangs with breezeway underneath that can, you know, visually makes that connection, and then combining that with a connection here, I think would be, would be valuable. And then just some other thoughts that I had. In general, I think having as many porches, useful porches on the ground level, not just stoops, but porches that are deep enough and wide enough that people can be sitting in them. And then also balconies above that aren't just ornamentation, but actual useful balconies overlooking especially the green. I do like the green. I like the scale of it. I like La Rambla, and I feel that you've got a lot of other green spaces also going on. I'd like to see some adult activities in there, whether it be things like, I don't know, there's a bocce ball court on North Doyle. It seems to get utilized sometimes, but not many people have bocce balls, I guess. but not many people have bocce balls, I guess. Basketball courts could be nice. As far as the designs, I really appreciate the fact that you're bringing in multiple architects for the project. I'd really like to, it seems in the nature of the overall neighborhood, I'd like to see this sort of as a raw, industrial, modern approach. Prefer to not see multi-colored stucco boxes, that we've seen too many of in Emeryville, but see more brick, steel, concrete, glass. I've heard mention of a gate. I don't know if that was over to the muse area or not, but in general, I prefer to avoid having anything gated off and to actually utilize the engagement of the designs with the green areas to activate those spaces and to make them more safe instead of gating them off. And, do you have any more comments? Yeah, those are the main ones.
Commissioner Moss, could I just ask for one point of clarification?
Sure.
The connection that you show through parcel B and through parcel C, are you intending that to be vehicular or pedestrian?
Pedestrian and bicycle.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go back to the talking points slide? The one that I want to kind of start, it's difficult to take these kind of one at a time, especially in, because in my mind, I think that the overall kind of driving issue for this project is the issue of the circulation and the traffic. So it's, we have to keep that in mind when we're discussing every other point on the slides, such as the height and the massing, because as it stands now, the way the site is designed, it seems that it's going to create a major impact on the surrounding communities. And I think that before we can even begin talking about bonus points and, you know, and having additional units and additional building height, I think we need to address whether there's just too much on the site. It's very hard for me to kind of give recommendations on specific things such as design when we haven't really addressed the, kind of the traffic and circulation issues. So, I mean, I have prepared talking points on each of these items, but I think before I'm willing to go into each one individually, I would like to talk about the circulation and traffic. Does anyone want to talk about that? Not an issue? An issue?
It's definitely an issue for me. I have, I'll go ahead. I think that, I agree with Brian very strongly that parcel B and C do need to be bisected east and west, at least for pedestrians and bicycles, if not even possibly for cars. There, there needs to be more connectivity through the space. I'm concerned that there is, the density is too great for the support, the surrounding streets to support such a project. And I also wonder why the bicycle path necessarily needs to be shunted all the way to the west and could possibly be integrated more into the center of the project. We want people to be using this retail and bringing their bicycles here, and so why not incorporate it into the center of the project? The, I think, simple, that the parking garage entrance on parcel C being right across from the residences could be fixed with moving it to the west, and also possibly breaking up some of the entrances, having more than one, for each parcel D, for parcel C and B. I am, and also if the Bicycle Boulevard, you know, was to move from Horton through to, say, Hubbard, the new kind of Hubbard extent, extension, it would be a little less far afield from Hallock Street and sort of taking it all the way to the western edge might be more useful. I'm, yeah, having, there are a number of trucks, as many of the resident owners and renters in the area have attested to, that you can barely get through, so it's a huge issue, and I don't quite know how we're going to solve this with the proposed site development here.
Do you want me to go ahead and do mine, or do you want to do? If you have comments on circulation.
Circulation.
Well, I think that not all the entrances and garage places have been fully illustrated in what we've seen in the presentation on the 16th. I saw something that you guys had with red arrows showing all the garage entries, and there are some that I don't think people know, like on the north end of parcel B, is there not an entry there? There is. So I think there's like two or three entries that everyone here is not really aware of. So I don't think we've been fully informed of all the entrances, but I definitely agree that Sherman Street is a problem, but I think more than parking, I think just the building placement is a problem. And I think like Chris says, is, there's, everything is interconnected here. So I think if, you know, even if you're having a problem with the traffic, if you could discuss your other issues and how they relate, we can kind of get a bigger picture, and then maybe start putting together what we want to do.
Sure, so, well, let me, I'll do my best here. And I'll just start at the top. Is, I did touch on the proposed mix of use. I definitely feel that if we're trying to keep the flavor of the Park Avenue District Plan, that it encourages that part of town to have more use at night, and so it's going to be important to bring in the right type of retail that's community-serving, that's resident-serving. So right now, I think that it's, I can't really tell from the design here where that's occurring. I think it's just too preliminary, but that would be something I'd like to see developed more in their future, their future concepts. Is the proposed siting of parcels and buildings acceptable? I mean, it seems that based upon the constraints of the remedial, the remediation efforts, that you're kind of stuck with what you have there. And I think the applicant clarified that they aren't necessarily looking at these extremely long blocks of buildings, or maybe, actually, I think what you said was that it was more, it was similar to what the other blocks are like nearby. So these long blocks between Sherwin and 40, or between 45th and 53rd, and that may be the case now, but I think that the intent of the Park Avenue District Plan was to actually have new developments mirror or mimic the smaller blocks that you see in this district here. So that's why I think that the buildings could be kind of dissected, similar to what you show in your plan, Brad, and I think also to what you've shown as well, just so that you have shorter blocks and not these very large super blocks that we're all trying to move away from in the city wherever we can. So I would say, just to summarize that point, the siting of the parcels is, I think, I think it is acceptable in terms of what you're working with, but that the blocks themselves need to be shortened. I think I talked enough about the circulation and the layout of the streets, that kind of all works with the siting of the parcels. The proposed height and massing, I think that really is where I get stuck with the, or stuck on the point of the traffic and the amount of cars that, the way that the project is proposed now is going to really have an impact on the site and the neighboring community. And so I'm not as enthusiastic about having taller buildings, having a lot of units. I think that, again, I'm going back to the Park Avenue District Plan, and that what we typically see are buildings towards the south with lower heights. And I like the idea of the, I forget, the other development where they, the other development where the units kind of stepped back, so where there were taller units, they were more focused towards the center of the project. So I think that that's going to be important if we do allow this bonus system in terms of increasing the density, increasing the height. I think we have to be very careful about how that's done if we do allow the applicant to continue, or allow the applicant to have, you know, this density that they're seeking. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of where I left off. As far as the, we didn't talk about open space, you want me to just keep going, or?
Sure.
Okay. In terms of the siting and the size of the open space, what did I have there? I think keeping the open space between parcel D and the other parcels, the way that it's shown now, I like the way that's situated now because it, I think that it will provide good flow if you do open up these parcels so that there are through streets or breezeways. I think it will provide more connectivity to the linear park and just more accessibility to the park from the other parcels and also the other communities that neighbor this area. I think if you move it too far north, that it may not be as well utilized. And then I think also, as one of the community members pointed out, you need to consider the lighting if you do flip-flop it with the parcel D building and move it north. So I would be more inclined to keep it where it is. And as far as the city park and dog park, I thought that that location was fine where it was. And then I thought it was, it was very good that we have more clarity on the width of the linear park, because I was concerned that if we have taller buildings, then you're going to create a tunnel effect. So again, that kind of goes back to the height of the buildings and also stepping the design back so that you don't have this, kind of this tunnel with these tall buildings on either side. Right now, it's not very clear how that's going to look. And then the public benefit, I'm going to hold off on that for now.
First off, I wanted to thank the applicants for their hard work in beginning the process of community engagement, because that's what's going to make this a great project, so I appreciate that. And it's exciting to think that something's going to be happening here. I also do like the use of multiple architects to create different places within the place, and I think that's a wonderful idea. And I think the main thing I want to address here is that what we have before us for the study session is a PUD, it's a Planned Unit Development, and that's a big deal. And we want to see something significant happen on this site. We need to make a place. So, a place that relates, that is unto itself a place, but also relates to the outside places that are right near it and the city as a whole, as well as the region. So what is the big idea here? We don't have that yet, would be wonderful to have that. And what does the community want and need? So you're getting that information, and obviously you're going to be integrating it. I think one of the things in this city that we've just passed was a brand-new school, which is very close to where you are, and the idea of family-friendly housing and creating amenities for families that want to live in an urban environment could be, this is a perfect opportunity for that. And I encourage market rate and below-market rate housing and amenities, as well as home ownership as opposed to renting. I think that that's what creates engaged residents that have a stake in their space. That's not to say there can't be a mix, because that also create, having the variety does, as you mentioned, help to strengthen the community. So, that being said, the central South Park-type alley, I guess we could call it, it's only 50 feet wide, is very problematic to me. I don't know if it's going to be a great park-type space. I completely agree with Commissioner Moss that I think we need retail on both sides. We need to triangulate the uses so that we create active spaces, and I'm not sure we have to have it be an alley. Obviously, you haven't resolved the articulation of the buildings yet. The setbacks and creating good pedestrian experiences with no blank walls, I know you have issues with parking and where to put the cars, so that's going to be very important that you are creative about that. I liked Commissioner Gunkel's idea, just the brief sketch that he put of how to step things back to make it more, a better space for all. And I also, what came to my own idea, that parcel D doesn't have to be all the way to the north or all the way to the south, but somewhere in between makes much more sense to me. Connectivity is really key. I already went through having more east-west connections, and I think that looking at car, bike, and pedestrian is important. Also, how it connects to Bart AC and the Emery Go-Round. And I think that the project, as it stands now, just the way I'm looking at it, is very insular, so looking at all the edges, looking at the outside edges, I think it needs to be more part of the community, because it is kind of all along the central roundabout. Neighborhood-serving businesses, you've already had a lot of input on that, I agree with that. Again, I'll mention the idea of possibly having the bike path go through the center of the project. Car share and bike share, for sure, should be included on this site. All the loading needs to be done off the street and on the site, so that's something that's going to be really important to make this project work, because there's no room on any of the streets. And again, the sort of time-shared parking agreement, that's going to definitely need to be important, and having public parking, although, of course, we do want it to be a, not a lot of people, at least people driving in as possible, we cannot help but know that people will drive here, so we have to take that into account. In design, I'm in agreement with many of the residents, as well as, I think, Brian, you said, the idea of quality materials, using brick, concrete, iron, glass, and we're not looking for more stucco Lego block boxes here, so that's important. Definitely more green space and greening of all the spaces, small and large, I think is important. Zero net energy would be great, that would be a lovely thing. Public art, also a lovely thing, but when, again, I'm like to, I'm not sure about exactly what public benefits I would prefer at this point, so I'm just going to mention all of them, and we can come back to that in a minute. And I think that was, those are the main points. Oh, I did have a question for staff, and maybe it's just my not really understanding, but, in terms of the parks and open space, which, according to the staff report, would be made a bonus, shouldn't that just be a requirement in terms of that two-point, that two-point, a little over two acres? that, two-point, a little over two acres?
The only bonus, the open space that may be bonusable is the design and construction of the railroad parcel, the dog parcels. The two acres, they have to provide within the site because a portion of their site is zoned open. So that, that's not included. That's not bonusable. Only the...
So it's, it's just developing the dog park site, yes?
Developing and maintaining and designing.
And maintaining.
And constructing, obviously.
So it's sort of constructing a public park that's not on their property?
Correct.
And maintaining.
And maintaining it, yeah.
Okay. And I do like the idea of a dog park. I think we need that in this town.
I might note that we've also identified as one, another potentially bonusable thing related to open space is the acquisition and possible development of the little wedge that's missing from Horton Landing Park, Phase Two, the little piece we need from the railroad to complete that park, which includes the bridge over the, over the creek.
Well, I guess if I had to talk about my favorite public benefit would be probably the open space. And making sure that the, the public transportation that is not necessarily vehicular is thoroughly thought through and added to and amended.
Okay, well, before I start my seemingly long presentation, not to scare everyone off, we're going to make this quick. I totally get the design behind the Central Green, and in concept, I totally agree with it. But for many reasons, I'd like to see the Central Green more open to the southwest. And one reason being is unlike South Park, ours is going to be more narrow with buildings of five to seven stories, where South Park is a larger park and surrounded by three-to-four story building, or two-to-three story buildings with a few four and five stories built in there. So this is just one reason. And as I go through my presentation, I'll kind of highlight a few more why I think we need to open that up. Okay, so everyone's pretty aware of the site we're talking about and what we're looking at, so I'm just going to buzz through here. The one thing, thing I want to do is talk about moving part of parcel C back to the railroad tracks. And as I discussed, we'll get into that a little bit more. Here's a lot of things that no one can read, but mainly this presentation is for the developers to give them ideas of directions in which we could go for. But I think the building on parcel C needs to follow the curve, or the, the curve of the western edge of the property. In front, the part of that parcel on the east side of the building should be more articulated, which everyone has talked about tonight. And I'm having a little bit of a hard time seeing this.
I would just note that this presentation was previously emailed to all the planning commissioners, so you had a chance to look at it prior to now.
So relocating the park, I think, has a better interface with the neighborhoods. And I think the benefits to dividing parcel C into two are that we can continue Halleck Street behind the buildings, which is shown here. I don't envision that street as a through street. I think it needs to end, which I will show later on, at the end of the parcel. By doing this, it will remove one of the garage entries off of Sherwin Way, out of this location, and it'll keep more of the traffic out of the neighborhood directly. The current proposal of this part of parcel C also will block the views from 1500 Park Avenue, which have beautiful, great, big warehouse-type windows, which now we'll look into a building here. And I think once we open that up, they're going to have a much better view shed. Swapping this location with the park also creates a more open and contiguous space, which allows for more light and air. So if you have this opened up here, you now have a park that goes from this location all the way through the center and out to this location. So contiguous space, whether it's small or large, looks larger. So I think if we can open that up and create a, almost looks like one large park, we're going to be better off. As everyone has talked, I think separating building on parcel B and C is important. I believe these should just be pedestrian and bicycle accesses and not vehicle. This is more in keeping with the general plan of breaking up blocks and creating a more fine-grained community. And this picture here kind of shows just an example, I think in Portland or Minneapolis, of what you can do in that place. I think this location for building D is probably the best location because it's moved a little bit away from the, the rest of the community and will allow for more height, but yet it's still part of the community. I think this is a great location for a signature building, perhaps not an icon, but something very special. So breaking it down quickly, I'm just going to talk about a few of the buildings and some ideas I had. This, I kind of like on your illustration, although this isn't your concept-built-out, I kind of like them. So in looking at this building, if we go back to here, we're looking, I like this broken open part here that could be similar to this here. This could be a more stately building, a little bit more beautiful, a little bit more formal. We can kind of tone that down by adding warehouse windows in here instead of the nice ones, or we can just go into a, a more renovated industrial-type building. But just as, again, for the developers, some examples of what we can do. Here's how we can lighten up the mass of some of those, move this back a little bit, a lot of open space up here. Quickly moving on to parcel B, what I call B2. This is a place, I think, where we can actually tie this building into the existing building. If you see this building here, this is from Milwaukee. It looks identical to the Sherwin-Williams building. And then if you see these newly-added penthouses or upper-story apartments, they are stepped back a little bit, and they all provide outdoor space. And again, I like the way you guys have already shown this. These images facing west into the Bay and our New Bay Bridge would be what these face onto as well. Moving on to parcel C, this is where I think we can move a little bit more out of the box because we're a little bit more removed and remote. I think we can go into some more interesting architecture. This is going to kind of be difficult for people to see. I'd kind of like to say this image is standing at the Bay Street garages and looking south across the railroad tracks. So we could do a building here that's a little bit more significant in size and design, lighten it up again with the glass on the top. This could be a parking structure that fronts the railroad tracks. Halleck would come in at this point, and you could drive in and park in this direction, or even come around to this side and park in this direction. But this illustrates, by breaking this up, we have at least three sides of this building that we can activate. And I think in the community meeting, people were talking about activating the corners. So if we break this up, we give more corners of a building that can be active, that people can approach. And that's one of the things I believe is, I think, all these buildings should have some active space in it, that we shouldn't be so centralizing our commercial aspects in just one street or one area of this, that we need to spread it throughout. So this kind of bridge is where I kind of visualize Halleck Street ending and not going further into the, the property. If people don't like this building in particular, here's a couple other examples. These two are from Copenhagen, Denmark, brick and some modern glass. I particularly love this one with the open end center, again, stepping back, using a different, you know, more traditional roof line. This is a great apartment building I saw in Minneapolis with outdoor space all along here and here. You can make it a little bit more industrial-looking, add brick or something. This is just another example. I don't think it's one of the best, but just something to give your, your designer something to work towards. And now going into parcel C2, which I'd like to see moved back into a land swap with that. And in doing this, what we could do is create more townhouse-type units, smaller in scale than what would be proposed. But what these could do is they could front a parking structure. So behind these units, they would have a three-story, so-to-speak, parking structure that is along the railroad tracks. And then they would face open to the park. So this would move these buildings away from 1500 Park Avenue. They would open up the green space to be contiguous with the whole project all the way up to the north end. And I just think it provides a better opportunity. And then here is a very rudimentary schematic. These are the railroad tracks, Halleck Street. You could have your parking here. These would be the townhouses we just discussed. And then on top of the parking structure, you can add a couple more levels. That would be, again, like everyone is saying, set back. And you could put outdoor space up here, a little back here, that could enjoy the views of, of the San Francisco Bay. And then quickly, just stuck in, and I, again, agree that this is the place for the park. This is the place for the building. And what we can do is work with the smaller space here to connect the greenway and the bridge. I think this provides us the space for a very signature building. In the removal location, it gives us the opportunity to create something unique and something urban. And I think we should capitalize on opportunity to the best of our ability. Here, we're looking at structural components that add to the language of the building, again, outdoor space. I think these elements of the tanks are very indicative of the area. Maybe they could be water storage of some sort. Just, you know, kind of ideas to give you guys. And then this could be an alternate idea of a building that could go in that space as well. This here is, I'm going to give you guys, is on the left side. These are things we'd like to see, more glass, more brick, more outdoor space, not any more of this. When we talk about outdoor space, some of these outdoor cafes and shopping areas, not elevated outdoor space or fenced off. This shows a building that you can reduce the mass without the necessary articulation everyone always talks about. This building is six stories. This building is five stories. And I think this one, at Glass House, is not a Glass House, and it's far more massive-looking, I think, than this. Outdoor space, create, you know, outdoor space that blends in with the buildings instead of just looks like an add-on. And then to talk about details, let's be careful with our details, they're very important. Let's add them, but let's not make them look like 3D decal stick-ons that we, you know, just stuck on the building. So in this last bit, I just want to give you guys some quick suggestions, and we'll be done here. So I'd like you guys to try to take advantage of the views wherever possible, especially of the Bay and San Francisco. Create the pedestrian pass-through buildings or parcel C and D. Add some amount of active space or commercial space to every parcel. Perhaps the 1-on-2 C may not be necessarily set up for that, so that may be excluded. No areas, as Brad said, should be closed off or locked at any time. We don't wish to create any gated communities. One of the parks should be part of the development plan in the very beginning, and I think the Central Green should be, when you do your first building, the Central Green should be incorporated with that. And as also suggested by a number of the public, is we need to provide AC transit, EZ-Passes for all residents and employers. And then below that is just some list of suggestions for active space, which we don't need to go through, but it coincides a lot with the residents that they discussed. And then the next three pages, we're not going to talk about, but it's just highlighting parts of the general plan and the Park Avenue District Plan, I think that we and the developer needs to pay attention to. So thank you.
Can you put the talking point slide back up before you leave?
Okay. See if I can find it.
It's the first one. Yeah, that's it.
All right, so I have, I have, actually have a couple of, I got to thinking today about the open space on the site and how it sort of functions and circulates and the usability of it. And so I actually just threw out some flimsy and sketched out a couple of options that I, that I want to show, so I'll throw them up on the projector in a second. But before I do that, I, there are a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Let's see, where to start? So circulation, as far as circulation, that was something that came up before in other comments. My opinion is always that there's, there's not a, there's not a traffic problem until the traffic analysis tells me that there is. And so I think it'll be really critical to see the, the sequel analysis as far as traffic. I think that's, I think traffic considerations are something that really has to be data-driven. I think when we, when we try to make decisions about traffic from perceptions of it, that usually goes wrong. And so I'd be, I'm really curious to see how the, the traffic analysis is going to shape up. Parking, I guess, is related. We heard a lot of comments tonight, a lot of, there were a lot of really great comments. I really want to thank everybody that, that did comment. It was, it was really, the diversity of comments really struck me, and I think it was really great to have so many different points of view represented tonight. We heard, you know, various things that there was, you know, too much parking, or, I'm sorry, not enough parking, too much traffic, density, you know, the density was great, there was too much density, so a lot of various things. And I want to say my, my perspective on that is that actually 900 spaces seems like a lot of parking to me. And I think reducing the parking can actually do a lot to reduce the automobile trip generation. So it's, and, and moving forward on that, I think in terms of, I want to address the bonuses was one of the, the issues for discussion. And one of the bonuses I would really, really, really like to see is sort of TDM measures. So I think Commissioner Keller just mentioned EZ-Passes, and I think that's a great one. That's something that actually the, the barrier to entry on that is a lot significantly lower at the onset of a project than it is after a project is, is constructed and habitated. So that's something that would be great. In, you know, incorporation of a Emery Go-Round stop, if that is feasible, that would be great. Car share, bike share, those things all would be really great, and I think would, would really go a long way to reducing some of the traffic concerns. But again, we'll see when the traffic analysis is done. But if those things could be incorporated as part of the application, then they could be analyzed with the traffic analysis, and I, I think that might be a win. A couple of things that Commissioner Gunkel mentioned that I just wanted to voice my support for, the idea of porches, I think, is a great idea. I was actually walking recently through the Uptown development in Oakland, and I was really pleasantly surprised to see how many people on the ground floor are utilizing their porches really well in that development. There's a lot of potted plants and things out on the porches. They really all, almost all of them look really beautiful. So if you need, I don't know what it is about the design of those that lends themselves to use so well, but if you need an example, that's a good one. And also the sort of stepped-back, step-backs in the architecture, I think is a good idea. I think sort of stepping down towards Sherwin Street to respect some of the existing building heights is a good idea. I don't necessarily want to, trying to lose units, but, you know, if there's a way to do that, I think that really could, could address the, the surrounding properties really well. And then I wanted to address something that Commissioner Keller mentioned in his presentation, which is the extension of Halleck Street. I think that that's an intriguing idea. It's, it's something that I would support under certain circumstances and wouldn't support under other circumstances. So if it, if it reduced at all, excuse me, if it reduced at all the usable open space on the city's parcel, that would not be something that I supported. But, and, and I think for me, it would, if that were to happen, it should be a through street. But if it could be done without reducing that open space, I think it's, it's sort of an intriguing idea. And so I'm going to try to throw a couple things up here. So this was something I did real quick in, in sort of thinking about the open space. And it reiterates some things that have, have been said here tonight, so I, I actually feel even better about showing it. It, I started to think about how the open space was distributed and, so on the, on the left is the city's parcel, and on the right is the, the other 2.6 acres or part of that. And, and for this, I moved it all the way to the north, up against Horton Landing. But it just seemed like through the site that there needed to be connection outward to Horton Street and, and just, just outward in general of, from the site. And so I, I, you know, thought that, and, and both of these actually delete the Central Green. I thought, actually, there were a lot of opportunities presented by doing that. And I think this sort of east-west corridor is, is an opportunity that could be gained by, by just doing a, a simple street in place of the, the Central Green. So that, and, and also, the other thing that this does is it, it creates sort of some smaller blocks because, not necessarily with streets, but with that linear parkway, it, it breaks. blocks because, not necessarily with streets, but with that linear parkway, it, it breaks it up into, into smaller blocks. And then, and then that is, and then that is just another idea I had in looking at the open space. It seemed like maybe that there could be a synergy with combining the, the 2.6 acres with the city's parcel to get a really sizable, usable piece of open space that could be programmed in a variety of ways. So I just drew it in there. I don't know the, the size exactly, so I drew that other box as, you know, maybe that's a, maybe that's a potential development site. It's just sort of wherever the, wherever the acreage would, would fall. But anyway, that was just another option I thought of. Because in, and, and the other thing that this does is it, when I started to think about the Horton Landing Park and having the park located as sort of an extension of that, it seems really inaccessible, actually. The only, really, the, the only access to Horton Landing Park is from that narrow pathway through Horton Street and then, you know, further up Horton Street behind the, the Novartis Garage. So it's, you know, while I think there's some synergy there with locating a park there because of the plans for Horton Landing, it just seemed really inaccessible as a usable park. And so this location seemed a lot more accessible. I think the city's parcel is already more accessible at, you know, sort of on Sherwin Street. It has, it has better access to a public street, and then expanding it, you know, further along Sherwin Street, maybe even all the way to an extension of whatever that is, not Hallic, the other one, Hubbard, really gives it good access. And then, you know, it would still be connected up to, along the railroad tracks with the bike spur to Horton Landing Park. So anyway, those are just some ideas that I had that I wanted to share for discussion. I realized I should have put this, that one slide back up. All right. So just real quickly, let's just take a look at those discussion points and make sure that we've given adequate guidance on all of those. I think the mix of uses, I think we're okay on that. I, I think we got comments from everybody on that. And please, anybody jump in if you, if you want to take a straw poll or want to offer anything else on any of these.
Well, I just think, Vanessa was comfortable with what was shown, but I think a number of us think there needs to be more, and we need to scatter around. Is that what yours name, Brad, that don't concentrate the commercial in one location?
Well, I think numerous people mentioned that. I mean, I think having a concentrated, I, I think having a certain critical mass is important, but running it all along one side, it seems like there might be more opportunities to, to have it on both sides of the green.
And to activate the corners of the different parcels.
And, and also, I mean, I personally also feel that trying to mix the, the family sizes and income groups as much as possible within the entire project, within, I mean, maybe breaking the buildings up into, you know, if you do break up parcels B and C a little bit, might create more opportunities to at least mix it up a little more.
Yeah, it seems like we're all wanting to break those two off.
I think the general plan specifies that. A fine-grained city is what's in there, and those two buildings are way too big.
And having, and having the connection to the neighborhood, having it less insular. I'm, I'm very, I like your idea about pushing, making the center open space more larger. I think that's, in, in that sort of at the south end, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, because they're talking about blocking that off and maybe doing an event in there. With that connected, you could put a bandstand there. You could put tents with vendors in there and let people still walk on that green, the Central Green, and then off to the Northern Green. And it just makes, I think, much more synergy if everything is connected. And just the fact of removing that building from in front of 1500 Park, whether it's a garage or even a four-story building, from one to three, those people that live there have now no view but a building across the street from them. And I just think it's a bad place for the building.
It addresses the issue of the parking, too, because then the parking garage would be facing the railroad tracks instead of the open space.
Yeah.
And I, I think that there still can be a dog park. I don't know if it's at the northern.
I think we could find space somewhere. I think they're important. I think the synergy that they bring is, is really, and there's got to be space for it somewhere.
I think, you know, having, the Central Green is one of my favorite parts of this project.
Point two.
And, you know, if building parcel C or, you know, gets broken up and one portion of it gets pulled back, I think it's, you know, still, it's important to maintain a certain intimacy in that green. And I guess I, I do see that it solves some issues with regard to parking and, and the warehouse lofts and how you're, you know, what they're seeing when they look out. But I just think it needs to be dealt with carefully so that it doesn't just become too expansive. Because I think, you know, trying to nail down that critical mass with the residential, the porches, the commercial, all there, and really charging that space is going to be important.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with you, and I think it can be accommodated by the, sort of the middle portion being a little tighter. And I, and I think it does need to be critical mass and some, bestial closeness.
And it seemed like parcel D, I don't know. I mean, I think I threw in a compromise, which was like halfway, halfway in, halfway out. But I do, I, I mean, you already got a lot of park to the north, and you're just trying to create more park to the north, and it's all going to be in the shadow of probably the tallest building on the site, when you have more opportunity for a southern exposure.
Sunny. And it stays connected to the green as well. And I think, you know, Vanessa's line of work, and you can create a delineation, the southwestern part of the Central Green and the other part, there could be a really great natural delineation that's definitely there. Without, you know, you're going to lose some intimacy on that end because you're opening up, but I think the intimacy can be retained at the north end of that part of the park.
And I, I mean, Stephen, I know that you had a lot of examples of architecture that you were presenting, and I think a lot of it was materials and overall feeling. I mean, the one thing I did notice about a lot of those projects is they felt sort of insular to me in that they, they didn't have porches or balconies. And I'd really like these buildings to feel more engaged, more porous, more community-focused. I'd like individual units to be as focused as possible, or community-focused as possible, and even lobbies and main entries and really trying to engage, charge that Central Green.
The slide that you had of the townhouses really jumped out at me.
Every time I see those, I think of all the Pulte stuff that we built, and that these are the same thing. They're three-story units with garages behind them, and it's like, why couldn't we have done something like this at least once, you know? And here's our opportunity.
You get the, the stoops that you were talking about that are in north, in Uptown.
Porches.
The porches.
Well, and what do you guys feel about in, in the Central Green, the buildings that are there, like putting a retailer in the middle on the first story, and then having houses with, with porches that come around that? I think that would be kind of a different take.
I think that's actually one of the, the cool things about South Park in that, that example is like the, it's, it's, it's actually largely not commercial. It's a lot of office uses on the ground floor and a lot of residential buildings, and the, the retail use, you know, retail and cafe sort of uses are scattered throughout and on both sides, just, just, you know, peppered through there.
But there is a density to that project, or not project, to that space that we're not going to have here, so that there's, there's that fine line where we don't, we need, we need a certain density to make that work, but then we don't want too dense because we don't have a way to get people in and out.
I'd be curious what the density is there, because it's, these buildings would be taller than, than buildings there, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'd like, I'd also like to see something that brings, aside from just the fact that there's a few retail spaces here, some way to bring the residents of Emeryville into this space. And I don't know if that can be, you know, we're talking about the community, you know, the community benefit, just thinking in terms of, is there a, you know, can there be a gym or an outdoor gym or something, you know, some kind of, something that, that brings, brings residents from the surrounding neighborhood into this space.
Well, one of the spaces I had recommended was a wine or a beer bar. I don't know if you guys have been to City Beer on Folsom Street in San Francisco? And it's kind of a slightly subterranean, that's what I'm thinking of, a middle-of-the-block kind of retail, is this subterranean, subterranean place that has coolers of beers, they have beer on tap, they do beer tastings. And I'm not a beer drinker at all, but I go there when I'm in that area because it's a draw. And I think things like that would draw people from other neighborhoods to that neighborhood. A brew pub in the Pelco Building is something I've always dreamed of, because I think that Pelco Building is so cool, and it needs to have a brew pub or something really fun in it.
I think also in order to bring people from the community over to this area, you need to look closely at what you're doing with parcel B on the section that fronts Horton Street, and that, not having blank walls there, having some sort of step back or potentially townhouses, something with porches that look more residential. Otherwise, people will just see it as, well, there's the Sherwin Williams Building, and they won't necessarily be drawn in that direction.
So sort of if I can, I, I think we've addressed a lot of these, but sort of skipping ahead, do we, we want to talk a little bit about height and massing?
I think we talked somewhat about it, and things need to be stepped back so that it's.
Are we, are we sort of universal on that?
The height, I'm fine with going, giving in the bonus points if they give us the items to get there. I think stepping back and making it not so in-your-face is important, and there are different ways to do that. And I really think that right up against Sherwin and all those buildings, it definitely shouldn't be that close. But I'm, I'm fine with the height and massing overall.
I, I mean, I personally would prefer that, I mean, I think that what one of the buildings is, could be up to like a nine-story building, and I think taking that down to about seven stories and having the rest be more six, five, and then stepping down at the, at the edges seems to feel more in scale. You're not starting up at nine and dropping down to, you know, six or seven, and, and maybe getting to five by the time you get to the edges. I don't know. I, I just have a, I know you might be an exception, but I personally feel, once you get up above six stories, you know, I, I recently had the opportunity to be in a building that was just completed in San Francisco, and I went to the each, went to the same unit on each floor. And when I was on the fourth floor, I really felt engaged with the street. When I was on the fifth floor, I was kind of half-in, half-out. Sixth floor, it was more about the views. And I think going up above that, you know, I, I think keeping maybe seven as a, as a maximum height on this project, and, and maybe that's parcel D seems more in scale.
Well, from a personal perspective, every night before, every night before I go to bed, I look down. And I have called the police several times because of the public market. I look at the view. For me, my fortunate of where I live is huge views out far, but I'm very engaged, and it's almost something I do religiously every night as I go up to the windows and I look at my neighborhood. And I think John and I are very engaged in our community and neighborhood, and we're 30 floors up.
Well, I, I'm going to actually say that I, I think, I think density on this site is good, and I think it's going to make this project work and make this project be vibrant. And I do think the north end of the site is sort of the, the best location for that because of the, because of the, I think it's a PUD on the Novartis site that is approved for a tall building. I, I think that the, the northernmost parcel is, is really, that, that's, that's the prime development opportunity, I think.
I, I agree with that. I think that that's the place to put the height. And having a little less high on C and D, or C and B makes a lot of sense, to step it down to the neighborhood of the south and the, and the east.
Yeah, I, I think that keeping, I don't know, 50-third isn't really shown here on this plan that well, but just trying to, yeah, parcel C and B, I'm, I'm still in favor of, of stepping that down. And I think parcel D being a taller building, I think that's fine. But just keeping in with the character of this area and the, you know, the plans that were put together for the Park Avenue District, that we need to listen to that and that the desire was to, you know, to, to have those buildings mesh well with the existing buildings in terms of their height, so.
Well, if I could, I know I'm talking a lot, I'm sorry, but what we, what we're not looking at is, Aaron keeps looking at 1500 Park North. If you look south of 1500 Park, you've got the Icon Building, and as I rode by that tonight, that building is six stories. There's also Age Song. That I think is at least five. You know, so 1500 Park is not the tallest building in the neighborhood. And we have to think of Park Avenue as a whole district, not just the Sherwin Williams Park as Park Avenue. And I think if we start.
I'm not just thinking of it that way. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but.
No, those are directly related, I see that. But I just, just keeping, you know, a full perspective of the whole neighborhood that we're looking at is, is all I was just suggesting.
Excuse me. If I may just inquire, I'm trying to give some, get good direction for our design team, and a couple of major questions. I just want to, again, on the architecture, we'll come back on that. We got the direction relative to that. The basic issue relates to the site plan right now. And so a couple of questions. One was about the Hallic connection, which I'm just trying to get a sense of whether or not a Hallic connection makes sense, and if that's something, a direction you'd like us to pursue.
Well, I think, I think the idea came from him. I think I was pretty clear under what circumstances I would support that, so.
And, and having said that, I would say that if there's a Hallic connection, it's going to eat into that space. So I'll take that as a no.
Okay, then I would not support.
Well, the thing is, is we don't have to have parking on that street. It should just be an access road and to the bare minimum that it needs to be.
Correct.
And it could, you know, it could open up an opportunity for a garage entrance to parcel C that then.
That would make sense to me.
Yeah, that gets rid of the 1-on-Sherwin.
Okay. And, and the second point gets back to the Central Green, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not to include it, whether to break it up, whether or not to expand it, whether or not to blow it up and go in a totally different direction. I'm just curious, is there consensus on that specifically?
Well, it sounded like most of us were interested in keeping it, but maybe opening it up some on the south side and pulling portion of parcel C back into the, what's now the dog park, and swapping some of that park over. So the parcel C becomes two buildings, one that's, one that's a little bit further to the west than you're showing it right now.
On the south side.
Okay.
I, I really do like the, I love the concept, but I, I felt that there really does need to be an east-west connection. And so that's, that was why in the schemes that I show, I sort of reoriented it. But maybe, maybe there is an opportunity to just actually physically take it and reorient it east-west as, as it currently, you know, in its current state. I don't know.
I also just want to introduce for the conversation two other elements. Number one is the views to the west, we really, I mean, Akio's really is tall. I would say real tall. And then Bay Street is even taller. So it's, and then you get the highway off-ramps. So I'm not anticipating that when we go up 50 or 60 feet. I will just mention that when we originally presented this plan 10 years ago, we actually had high rises and much taller buildings on the north end of the site, and through the general plan process, which I know you're, were part of, they pushed it down. So we're sensitive to, that was due to pressure from some of the neighbors and, and the like, so.
And to that end, the views through the site is, is key. So that's dealing with the edge condition. I mean, this plan right here, the, the view through from, from Horton to the west is like directly at the tallest part of the Bay Street parking garage. It's, there's no reason to have a, a view through there. So that, that's another thing that needs to be considered, is what we're looking at to the west.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with you. Okay. I think I have direction relative to the site plan, so.
Good. I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moss? Yes. I'd just like to throw something out. This is a PUD, and so the way a PUD works is.
works is, um, as I'm sure you know, but just to remind you, the first thing is to, to get a preliminary development plan approved and that, uh, is for the entire site. And that has to be approved by ordinance by the city council and basically essentially becomes the zoning for the site. And the PDP, Preliminary Development Plan, can be as detailed or as general as you deem appropriate. Um, then the individual buildings or phases of development that come in, come in as final development plans, which are fleshed out in a lot more detail. And under the new planning regulations, only require planning commission approval. They don't have to go to the city council. The key thing is you have to find that they're consistent with the PDP. Um, there can be one or multiple FDPs depending on if the developer wants to phase the project or build it all at one time. I believe these developers wish to build it all at one time. I don't think they're planning on phased FDPs. I don't know. You can also submit FDP and PDP concurrently. I don't believe they're planning to do that. I don't know. But my point is that the PDP is sort of the, the broad parameters. You might think of the PDP as kind of the design guidelines for the site. So if there are critical things that you want to, and it can also set where the uses go. I mean, it can set a lot of the things that you're talking about tonight. It might not necessarily talk about details like balconies and decks and stuff, although you can certainly put in the conditions if you want to see certain things. So I guess what I'm saying is, when the PDP comes before you, I would encourage you to think of the kind of, at the sort of design guideline level, what kind, what, what general principles, what massing, stepping back, you know, all these kind of things do you want to see in this project? So that you have a yardstick to measure against when the FDPs come before you.
So does the PDP go to city council?
Yes.
Okay.
It's passed by ordinance. It basically becomes the zone.
And so that you don't think should be a little bit more detailed since...
It can be, as I said, it can be as general or as detailed as you think appropriate. Uh, but the FDP is gonna be more detailed. Because the FDP is gonna be the actual building design.
And that's only approved by us, not council.
Correct. You just have to find that it's consistent with the PDP. So for example, an FDP, I mean, a PDP might be kind of a massing diagram with some, you know, parameters.
Right.
And the FDP will be the actual building design and you have to look at it, see if it fits within that massing diagram.
So both the PUD and the PDP are, need to be adopted by ordinance?
Well, PUD is kind of a general term for the whole process.
Yeah.
So the PDP of the PUD is adopted by ordinance. And the FDP or FDPs of the PUD are approved by the city coun-, uh, by the planning commission.
Okay. Alright, I think I got it.
So it seems to me like if we make it, I don't, I don't think, I'd want to make it very vague, but if we made it a little bit more vague and council approved it, then we have a little bit more control or say over the details as they come to us and it just gets approved.
Right. Now ultimately, it's up to the council. So if the council puts some details in here that you don't necessarily agree with, you gotta live with those.
We have to anyway.
When the FDP comes before you. Right.
Alright, so have we opined on open space all that we want to? Okay. Um, and then last one is benefits. So I, I think I heard quite a bit of support for TDM-type measures.
Definitely.
Is there anything else anyone wants to add?
Um, I would like to add, um, family-friendly housing and just a mixed, a mixture of housing types.
And, you know, unless there's, they make some compelling reason for not mixing the income levels and types of housing and buildings, I'd rather, I'd like to really see that. And, you know, you talked about that and you may have reasons I don't know about, so maybe bring those back if, if that's some way you still want to go. But I still think scattering them throughout is a better way, at least in my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I guess I did want to say, I mean, I, I sort of realized that since this is, um, proposed as, at least initially as entirely rental, that provision of, you know, requirement for provision of affordable housing is a little bit, a little bit up in the air at this point. Um, but I really would love to see, uh, inclusionary housing as part of it. And I'm not sure how the, the condo map affects that or anything. But, um, and then I, unless anybody else has anything on that, I, I just had one other unrelated comment that I forgot to make earlier, which is that I, um, I really appreciate that you, uh, have said that you want to bring in multiple architects. Um, and I think it would actually be great if mul-, if, um, multiple architects could even work on the same building or, or for the facade, you know, different parts of the facade of the building, I think, um, would really create a lot of architectural variety. So I know it's not the most popular, uh, working condition for architects, but I just, I just said it. So if, unless, does anybody have any other comments on this study session?
As an architect, I, I disagree with you. I think breaking, having individual buildings is enough. Otherwise, it starts to feel like, uh, Bay Street or something where you're trying to break up the facades into some artificial, uh, downtown or, you know, neighborhood.
I would tend to agree with Brad. I'm happy that they're doing what they're doing and I think that'll be effective.
Well, that is what I'm trying to do.
Make Bay Street again?
Sometimes too many cooks spoil the soup.
Alright, well, I think, uh...
Do we have everything, given you everything you need, Charlie?
Yeah, I think so. We've took, taken a lot of notes. Obviously, a lot of ideas have been tossed out. I didn't hear any huge disagreements. I mean, I heard a lot of ideas and, uh, I think we're all kind of pretty much heading in the same direction. Applicant, uh, happy with, I mean, not happy, but you're not, not too confused? Yeah. Yeah, well, okay.
And I guess I'll just say, oh, sorry. I, I did hear a lot of support also for sort of an east-west connection and smaller blocks. I think there was a lot of support for that.
I would point out that the, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, I think that we had a consensus on that point.
The, the Halleck Street extension, I would just point out that, I mean, it could just be a driveway.
Yeah.
But even if it were, it would still need to be probably at least 18 to 20 feet wide. And if it were a pedestrian bicycle path, it's probably more like eight to 10 feet wide. So there is at least gonna be that much additional pavement going through that open space area.
Yeah, that, that concerns me.
And, and motor vehicles.
Well, that's what the land swaps for.
I think they're gonna run up against EVAs though, too. And they're, I mean, it may end up being something where the fire department's, you know, forcing their hands to put in a driveway there.
Well, if that's the case, then it might as well be a street. But I don't, I haven't heard the fire department, the fire department has reviewed this. I haven't heard them say there needs to be a street back there.
So if there was a land swap, that would, if, if that could be worked out, that wouldn't be an issue. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, you still have the issue of the slurry wall.
Yes.
So if they were to build a building on, on the city's part, property and the street, there, that wouldn't be a very big...
Well, if it's just a driveway and then we move the...
I think we'd let them figure that out.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just the idea. This is the beginning. Let them figure out some options of how it would work.
Got tons of ideas.
And they can tell us what we lose in terms of green space and if we can make it up somewhere else or if it's about the chunk to live with.
But I, I think we do, I think we do want them to, despite the maybe complexities, to think creatively about a land swap.
Yes. I would like to see that.
Alright, well, if that, um, if everybody's done with their comments, I think we will close this item and move on to our last item, which is, uh, commissioner comments, if there are any.
Has Commissioner Cardoza left, do you know?
Commissioner Cardoza did leave.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Has left the building.
I have no comments.
Nope.
Anybody? Nope. Alright, well, then, uh, we can adjourn.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.